Bienvenidos a todos. Mi voz no se lleva muy bien, ¿puedes escucharme?
Sí.
Bien. Mi nombre es Kim Friedman, vivo en South Newfane, y es mi honor ser la nueva moderadora de la ciudad. Gracias, es una manera linda de empezar la reunión. No sé, ¿está Deb Luskin en la sala? Bueno, incluso en ausencia, me gustaría reconocerla y su servicio durante muchos años como moderadora de la ciudad de Newfane. Y Deb, gracias por su servicio. He estado facilitando reuniones durante más de 40 años, y como algunos de ustedes saben, fui la presidenta del Consejo escolar de Newfane y luego del Consejo escolar de Newfane de Brookline durante siete años. Así que soy muy familiar con las reglas de orden de Robert. También son complicadas. Hay aproximadamente 47 motions diferentes que todos podemos hacer. Por favor, espere si hay momentos hoy en los que necesito tomar un pausa. Y me recuerdo en el tune-up de la moderadora de la ciudad que incluso las moderadoras de la ciudad que han estado haciendo este trabajo durante mucho tiempo todavía siempre están aprendiendo. Así que sé en advance que estarás paciente conmigo. El sheriff Marc Anderson está aquí. Necesita llegar a Londonderry a las 9:30. Así que a menos que haya alguna objeción, me gustaría abrir el piso para cualquier pregunta que pueda responder muy brevemente. ¿Hay alguna objeción? Bien. Sheriff Anderson, si pudieras levantar las manos para que todos sepan quién eres. ¿Hay alguna pregunta que alguien quisiera abordar? Sí. ¿Podría decir tu nombre y la ciudad de la que vienes?
Ken Estey, Newfane, Vermont. Y la pregunta que tengo para el sheriff es: ¿cuáles son los principios, prácticas y relaciones con ICE y la policía de inmigración?
Bien, en diez minutos o menos.
Trata de ser más breve que eso. Así que primero, el Departamento de Sheriffes, en 2010, comenzó a crear lo que se llama una política de policiación fair y imparcial. Fuimos uno de los primeros en el estado de poner esto en marcha. Así que fuimos un pioneer aquí en Wyndham County en ese tipo de práctica. Con el tiempo, evolucionó a una política estatal que todos los departamentos se han obligado a adoptar. Así que estatalmente, existe una política de policiación fair y imparcial desarrollada por el Consejo Penal de Vermont. Es un organismo que supervisa al gobierno de Vermont, que codifica cómo hacer o no funcionar. Es una política estatal, así que lo que ves aquí en Wyndham County es lo mismo que esperarías en Chittenden County o lo mismo que esperarías en Bennington o en cualquiera de las otras ciudades. Esa política específicamente llama a lo que podemos o no... ¿Está esto mejor? Lo que esa política específicamente llama a las formas en las que podemos o no trabajar con la policía de inmigración federal para la aplicación de la ley civil. Y podemos entrar en detalles de lo que eso significa, pero en corto plazo, los grandes gestos son que simplemente no estamos trabajando en la inmigración civil. ¿Por qué? No tenemos los recursos. Realmente no tenemos el propósito. No es nuestro trabajo, y nos importa más la seguridad pública en esta comunidad que lo que hacemos en el trabajo del gobierno federal. Quien tiene los recursos y todas las cosas. Así que en el panorama estatal y local, no hacemos inmigración civil. Y luego, más ampliamente, existe una ley estatal que especifica que es el oficio del gobernador quien tendría que aprobar cualquier acuerdo si queríamos entrar en uno para la aplicación de la inmigración civil. Así que ningún departamento de sheriff en el estado lo hace. Nosotros no lo hacemos. Las agencias de policía en el estado generalmente no lo hacen. Y creo que eso aborda, en grosso, tu pregunta.
Sí, por favor.
Williamsville, pregunta es: ¿alguna estimación de cuántas horas el Departamento de Sheriffes está actualmente poniendo en el área de Williamsville para detener todas estas discusiones?
Específico al pueblo en sí, no puedo cuantificar en horas estando aquí ahora mismo. Tenemos un deseo por la aplicación de la inmigración además de una variedad de otras actividades de aplicación en todo el pueblo. Así que el Consejo de Elección nos ha comunicado. Quieren que nos enfocemos aquí en Williamsville. Quieren enfocarnos en South Newfane. Quieren enfocarnos en Brookside. Quieren enfocarnos en la ciudad de Newfane y en otras partes de la ciudad. Así que con el financiamiento que nos proporciona para hacer la aplicación de la inmigración, lo estamos dividiendo en esos lugares. También estamos encontrando que estamos teniendo un cambio en el volumen de llamadas del policía estatal hacia nosotros en proporcionar otros servicios. Así que cuando vienen llamadas no relacionadas con la velocidad, se están deteniendo de nuestro tiempo para poder hacer específicamente la aplicación de la velocidad.
Sheriff Anderson, ¿tienes tiempo para una pregunta más?
Puedo hacer una más.
Bien, Dan. ¿Podría presentarse usted en la ciudad?
Soy de South Newfane. Soy Dan DeWalt de South Newfane. Gracias por su explicación en grosso. Solo una pregunta en grosso. ¿Esto significa que no comparte ninguna información? Como si te viera un informante documental. ¿No comparte ninguna información con la policía federal?
Así que esto es una interesante gira. La ley federal me impide restringir ninguna comunicación con la policía federal. Hacerlo haría dañar la capacidad de mi departamento o el estado de Vermont para obtener financiamiento federal. Así que esta es una respuesta muy anualizada. Pero suficiente decir que en los últimos 20 años no hemos hecho eso. En el contexto del que generalmente la gente habla. Puedo entrar en muchos detalles finos que se vuelven muy legales definitivos en decir, bueno, esta es la forma en la que lo hicimos. Y la mayoría de la gente dirá, bueno, eso tiene sentido. Pero en grosso, no, no comunicamos con ellos. Pero si dijéramos, "Estas son ciertas restricciones que tenemos", haríamos dañar el financiamiento de crédito que mi departamento recibe. El fiscal general también ayudó a codificar cuál es la actual política de policiación fair y imparcial así como la ley estatal para asegurarnos de estar en cumplimiento con la ley federal mientras siguen los principios y las expectativas que Vermont tiene sobre la inmigración.
Gracias por tomarse el tiempo de estar aquí y viajes seguros hoy.
Gracias.
Para los que están en la parte de atrás, hay asientos en el frente si quieren sentarse. Estoy solo esperando a Carol. Carol, solo por los propósitos de los minutos y asegurarme de que esta es una reunión legal, solo quería asegurarme de que usted captó que yo llamé a la reunión a orden a las 9. Bien, bien. Parte de ayudar a hacer las reuniones eficientemente es para que muchos de nosotros tengan una buena comprensión de las reglas de orden de Robert, si es posible. Así que hice un guión simplificado de las reglas de Robert, que está en su asiento. Y si no tienes uno o necesitas uno extra... ¿Dónde está Annetta? Oh, bien, hay extras en la parte de adelante, gracias. Y solo me gustaría tomar unos minutos para destacar algunas cosas donde a veces hemos... he notado en el pasado que podemos fallar. Así que, ¿todos están claros en el documento de lo que estoy hablando? Bien. Dice, "Reglas de orden de Robert simplificadas". Los principios guionales: Todos tienen derecho a participar en la discusión, si deseas, antes de que alguien pueda hablar dos veces más. Todos tienen derecho a saber lo que está pasando en todos los tiempos, pero solo cuestiones urgentes pueden interrumpir a un orador. Solo una cosa puede ser discutida a la vez, y quiero asegurarme de que todos estén realmente claros en esto. Podemos... puede haber una motion en la mesa siendo discutida, y eso puede ser amendado. Y el amendamiento puede ser amendado, y eso es todo. Así que si quieres seguir cambiando algo, tenemos que aprobar la motion amendada y luego tener una nueva motion. Y sé que es un poco complicado, pero no podemos seguir cambiando y cambiando los amendamientos, es mi punto principal. Sé que es incómodo, pero las reglas de Robert llaman a todos ustedes a abordarme como la moderadora. Verifiqué esto con la League de las ciudades y ciudades de Vermont porque puede sentirse tan incómodo. Pero pediría que intenten adherirse a esas reglas de Robert. Creo que todos saben que cada motion requiere un segundo. Alguien decir, "Yo estoy de acuerdo con la motion". Y cada motion tiene que ser resuelto de alguna manera: aprobado, derrotado, presentado, referido a un comité, retrasado indefinidamente, etc. Otro lugar donde a veces nos equivocamos es bajo "otro negocio". Y quiero aclarar que no puede haber ningún negocio vinculante bajo "otro negocio". Eso no es... cualquier cosa que salga bajo "otro negocio" no puede votar. Y incluso si fuera votado, no sería considerado un voto válido. Voy a usar, cuanto puedo, una característica de las reglas de Robert llamada conciencia unanida, con la que le pregunto a ustedes, como hice con el sheriff Anderson, si no hay objeciones, lo harán. Pero si tienen una objeción, por favor, hablen. Porque no es mi intención empujar nada. Es solo una forma de a veces evitar un debate innecesario sobre algo de lo que todos estamos de acuerdo. Si se cansan de la discusión actual, pueden moverse a limitar el debate. Las reglas de Robert permiten que un orador hable hasta diez minutos. Si en algún momento quieren limitarlo, entonces eso es algo que todos tendrían que votar, y necesitaría un voto de dos tercios. Lo mismo para cerrar el debate, o también conocido como llamar la pregunta. Y luego, lo último que quería mencionar es si siente que la discusión se ha alejado del tema principal, puede decir, "Llame por orden del día". Y puedo ayudarte con todo eso mientras avanzamos. ¿Hay alguna pregunta antes de proceder sobre cualquier característica de las reglas de Robert? Cualquier cosa que te ayude a participar tan completamente como quisieras. Bien. Antes de pasar al advertido, me gustaría citar al moderador de la ciudad de Rockingham que siempre dice: "Ven como amigos y vecinos, y nos irán como tal". Ahora estoy leyendo del advertido para esta reunión. "Los votantes legales de la ciudad de Newfane, Vermont, se advierten que a continuación, en el título 17, VSA, sección 2655, deben reunirse en la sala de Williamsville, Vermont, el martes 4 de marzo de 2025, a las 9:00 AM, para actuar sobre los artículos siguientes". El artículo 1 es encargado por la ballera australiana, y eso es la elección de oficiales de la ciudad. Justo arriba del artículo 2, estoy mirando el advertido, que también está en su reporte de la ciudad. Y gracias, Annetta. Es un pesado levantamiento compilar este reporte de la ciudad. Dice que el artículo 39 es una petición respaldada por el votante. En realidad, es solo un anuncio, en realidad es el artículo 38. Solo quiero evitar cualquier confusión. Bien, empezando con el artículo 2. "¿Deberían los votantes de la ciudad de Newfane pagar los impuestos durante el año siguiente a una base trimestral, a la fecha de 15 de agosto, octubre, enero y abril, cargando tarde por el interés a la tasa del 0.5% por mes durante el año fiscal actual, y el 0.75% por mes cada mes después de que se paguen?" ¿Cuál es tu placer? ¿Podría decir tu nombre y la ciudad? Y segundo, Bob Lyons. Se ha movido y secondado que los votantes de la ciudad de Newfane paguen impuestos durante el año siguiente a una base trimestral, a la fecha de 15 de agosto, octubre, enero y abril, cargando tarde por el interés a la tasa del 0.5%... Sí, tengo que leer todo lo nuevo de nuevo. ...por mes durante el año fiscal actual, y el 0.75% por mes cada mes después de que se paguen. ¿Hay alguna discusión sobre esta motion? Bien, parece que estamos listos para votar. Si un "sí" significa que apoyas el artículo como escrito, sin amendamientos. Un "no" significa que no apoyas el artículo como escrito. Todos los que están a favor, por favor, digan "sí". Todos los que oponen... Parece que los "sí" lo tienen. Los "sí" lo tienen. El artículo 1 pasa como... el artículo 2, perdón, pasa como escrito. El artículo 3. "¿Deberían los votantes de la ciudad de Newfane autorizar el Consejo de Elección para vender o enviar propiedad adquirida a través de procedimientos de venta de impuestos?" ¿Cuál es tu placer? Eso es una indicación de... Bien, Annie Landeberger, Williamsville. Y un segundo. Carol, ¿recibió su nombre y el segundo? ¿Podría decir su nombre de nuevo? Gracias. ¿Hay alguna discusión sobre el artículo 3?
Soy Emmett Madoffe Williamsville. No lo entiendo.
Sí, ¿dónde está Missy? ¿Podría presentarse usted?
Melissa Brown, Newfane, Denver. Así que cuando adquirimos propiedad a través de ventas de impuestos, la ciudad se ocupa de ella después de un año. Y luego tenemos el derecho a venderla a través de oferta.
Emmett, gracias por modelar y hacer preguntas. Quiero que todos sepan, no creo que exista una pregunta tonta. Y si tiene una pregunta, las chances son que alguien más siempre tenga esa pregunta. También tiene esa pregunta. Emmett. Déjame ver si alguien más tiene otra pregunta. ¿Alguien más tiene una pregunta sobre el artículo 3 antes de que Emmett hable de nuevo? No puedes... bien, ¿podría hablar en el micrófono, Emmett? Gracias.
Emmett Madoffe Williamsville. ¿Cuáles son las alternativas a vender?
Sí, realmente no hay. Vender para volver a la tasa de impuestos.
¿Hay más discusión, más preguntas? Sí, Ken. Por favor,寫你的名字和地名
Ken Estey, Newfane. ¿Ha considerado el Consejo de Elección no hacer esta práctica? En otras palabras, no tener una situación donde la no pago de impuestos permite a la ciudad entonces adquirir propiedad.
¿Sería capaz de hablar con alguien? ¿Qué es eso?
Espera, todos. Es mi entendimiento de que la ciudad tiene la autoridad de adquirir propiedad por no pagar impuestos. También es mi entendimiento de que la ciudad ha sido bastante leniente. Y según recuerdo, en años anteriores, en realidad hemos reducido los tasos de interés. Creo que Dan DeWalt fue instrumental en ayudar con eso. Pero la idea de que la ciudad pueda adquirir una propiedad es bastante grande. Y así, e incluso aunque parezca ser leniente, y usted ve el reporte de la ciudad y puede ver varios años donde la gente aún no ha pagado. Bueno, eso es bueno. Quiero decir, no es bueno que no pagues tus impuestos, pero también es bueno que no hayamos adquirido la propiedad. Así que mi pregunta es, ¿ha considerado el Consejo de Elección simplemente quitar esa opción del tablero en conjunto? Porque adquirir propiedad por no pagar impuestos es un gran movimiento. Es un problema serio en otras municipalidades y estados. Y parece que podría ser algo bueno que podríamos considerar en el futuro. Pero la pregunta es, ¿ha considerado eso?
Durante el tiempo que he estado en el Consejo de Elección durante cuatro años, siempre que hay un problema de no pago de impuestos, tengo que decir que Melissa trabaja increíblemente duro para elaborar planes de pago con la gente y para cambiar de lado para hacer que funcione para ellos. Solo hemos considerado eso en un caso donde parecía no haber otra opción viable. Se usa raramente. Se usa a nivel individual. Así que... y se usa como una elección de último recurso.
Walter.
Walter Phelps, Williamsville. Como recuerdo, durante muchos años, en respuesta a la pregunta de Ken, Newfane nunca tuvo una venta de impuestos y nunca adquirió ninguna propiedad. Y en ese punto, desafortunadamente, pagar impuestos se convirtió en opción. Había muchos cuentos donde los impuestos simplemente no se pagaban. Y creo que fue cuando Marshall Lichtman fue electo como colector de impuestos que comenzamos a ser un poco más... no forzoso, pero al menos seguir algún tipo de camino hacia la inversión de impuestos. Así que en respuesta a tu pregunta, esa es la forma en la que lo hacíamos. Lo hacíamos sin hacer nada, y finalmente llegamos a eso.
¿Alguna otra discusión o preguntas sobre el artículo 3? Bien. Ahora votarán sobre el artículo 3. "¿Deberían los votantes de la ciudad de Newfane autorizar el Consejo de Elección para vender o enviar propiedad adquirida a través de procedimientos de venta de impuestos?" Y un "sí" significa que apoyas esto. Un "no" significa que no apoyas esto. Todos los que están a favor, por favor, digan "sí". Todos los que están a favor, o oponen, digan "no". Creo que parece que los "sí" lo tienen. Los "sí" lo tienen. El artículo 3 pasa como señalado. Si el organismo lo permite, me gustaría parar y bienvenir al senador Wendy Harrison y la representante Emily Long, que nos han acompañado para un update y también para preguntas. ¿Hay alguna objeción? Bien, maravilloso. Gracias por estar aquí. Gracias por su servicio, ambos. Sería genial si usaran el micrófono, gracias.
Quiero asegurarme de que puedan escucharnos. Buenos días a todos. Wow, genial ver una habitación empilada en la reunión de la ciudad. Siempre bien. Gracias por reconocernos y permitirnos hablar unos minutos. ¿Dónde está tu voz en Montpelier? Solo quiero decir muy rápidamente, el senador Hashim quería estar aquí, planeaba estar aquí, pero fue llamado a trabajar. Tiene un trabajo, como muchos legisladores lo hacen. Y tuvo que ir a trabajo hoy. Así que no pudo estar con nosotros, pero quería compartir eso con todos primero. Ha sido un año inusual, voy a decir, en Montpelier en el que las cosas han estado desplegándose lentamente. Es un ambiente diferente en el que estamos trabajando. Los vermoneros del estado de Vermont envieron un mensaje, creo, a Montpelier de que quieren que seamos thoughtful sobre los pasos que tomamos. Y uno muy fuerte mensaje que escuchamos fue que querían ver bajas tasas de impuestos. Así que hemos estado tomando nuestro tiempo en Montpelier para desarrollar nuestras prioridades. Y puedo compartir las prioridades del Congreso, las prioridades demócratas del Congreso, digamos, ya que como todos saben, soy demócrata. Pero antes de entrar en esas prioridades, solo quiero decir rápidamente un par de cosas. Una es... He estado en la legislatura, creo que es mi sexto mandato. Y en ese tiempo, he pasado ocho años en varias posiciones de liderazgo. Los últimos cuatro como líder mayoritariamente del Congreso. Este año, he tomado la decisión de bajar de mis posiciones de liderazgo y volver a la política. Y mi pasión por la política, como muchos de ustedes son conscientes, es la educación. Y así, aunque pasé mis primeros cuatro años en el Comité de Educación, no he servido en el Comité de Educación durante esos años intervencionales, pero estoy de vuelta en la educación este año. Y, ¡qué año es estar de vuelta en la educación! Pensé que tenía un horario un poco más fácil sin ser líder mayoritariamente, pero resulta que estoy bastante ocupado en el Comité de Educación. De hecho, muy raramente dejo esa habitación. Así que solo quería mencionar eso para compartir con ustedes, mis colegas residentes de Newfane, que ahora estoy de vuelta en la política y estoy disfrutando de eso bastante, en realidad, porque es una gran parte del trabajo que hacemos. En cuanto a nuestras prioridades políticas, la educación está justo allí. Como todos sabemos, ha habido una propuesta del gobernador que en realidad acabamos de conseguir un proyecto de ley creo que el jueves, lo que es increíblemente tarde para poder recibir un proyecto de ley tan tarde. Pero no hemos esperado el proyecto de ley. Hemos llegado a trabajar en cuáles serán nuestras prioridades en la educación. Y como todos saben, la educación, para mí, es un espejo de nuestra democracia. Y creo que necesitamos apoyarla de cualquier manera que podamos y hacerlo a un costo que los vermoneros pueden soportar. Y no ha funcionado de esa manera. Ha ido cada vez más caro a lo largo de los años debido a que las necesidades han crecido a lo largo de los años. Y así, no estoy seguro de lo que vamos a terminar este año. Pero debido al poco inicio, mi suposición es que lo que tengamos va a ser un descubrimiento lento. El mensaje que estamos enviando a través de testimonios una y otra y otra vez, consistentemente, es: "No hagas algo significativo muy rápido. Toma tu tiempo y hazlo correctamente". Y eso, lo estamos tomando muy en serio. Por otro lado, bajar las tasas de impuestos no es algo de lo que podamos tomar tiempo. El gobernador hizo en su presupuesto un elemento de 77 millones de dólares para vender las tasas de impuestos este año, si surge esa necesidad, y puede ser. Trataremos de hacer lo que sea que podamos para asegurarnos de bajar las tasas de impuestos este año. No controlamos la gasto en Montpelier de los distritos escolares, pero parece que los distritos escolares están entrando con presupuestos mucho más bajos este año que hemos visto en los últimos años. Cuts significativos están siendo realizados en todo el estado. Así que no estoy seguro de dónde vamos a terminar y cuánto necesitaremos para bajar las tasas de impuestos. No es algo que he apoyado nunca. Creo que has oído decirlo antes. Creo que comprar artificialmente las tasas de impuestos no es un buen método porque siempre pagarás por ello más tarde. Y así, pero hararemos lo que necesitemos hacer para asegurarnos de que los vermoneros no sean amenazados con quedarse en sus propias casas. Así que esa es una de las cosas. Salud, vivienda, resiliencia climática, esos son todos nuestros prioridades. Pero honestamente, no hay una gran cantidad de dinero para apoyar cualquiera de esas cosas individuales. Así que vamos a hacer todo lo que podamos para aumentar el acceso a la vivienda y tratar de preservar nuestro sistema de salud tan bien como podemos. Nuestros ojos siempre están en el gobierno federal, como seguro que todos ustedes lo son también. Nos preocupamos mucho por la pérdida de financiamiento. Relajamos en el financiamiento federal, como todos saben. Y así, nuestros ojos siempre están en Washington. ¿Cómo podemos proteger a los vermoneros de lo que está pasando en Washington? Y eso es una preocupación constante. Y luego, lo último que solo voy a decir antes de mandarlo al senador Harrison, que tiene mucho que decir sobre el Congreso también. La responsabilidad del gobierno se ha convertido en una prioridad cada vez mayor para nosotros en el Congreso. Asegurarnos de que los proyectos de ley que pasamos operan de la forma que pretendíamos. Así que estamos aumentando nuestro rol, incluyendo establecer un comité separado en el Congreso para supervisar los resultados de la legislación que pasamos. Realmente necesitamos asegurarnos de que nuestros dólares sean bien gastados y seguidos y trackados. Y en ocasiones recientemente hemos visto... And so stay tuned on the work we're doing on that. So I'll turn it over to you, Senator Harrison.
Thank you, Representative Long. I'm glad you ended with accountability, because I haven't been talking about that at town meetings, but it's so, so important. Um so I I'm Wendy Harrison. I live in Brattleboro. Um, this is my second term in the Senate. And um I serve, one of the committees I served on was an accountability committee. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to to resume our work. But that is just so critical, because um we, you know, we have a very short session as legislatures uh and or as legislators. And um it's critical that what we do and especially the funds that we appropriate be used for what they're intended to be used for, because what happens many times is it doesn't get done and it intentionally doesn't get done, which is a problem. So go going back to the big picture, the Senate Democrats have um very similar um objectives uh and goals, obviously, to to address the the property tax issue, and we're working hard on that. Personally, I I like diversifying revenue. Vermont is very dependent on um property tax and income tax. And the property tax only has two categories, um which which really limits what we can do. And um I serve, we the Senate Senators serve on two committees. So I'm Chair of Institutions in the afternoon, and I serve on the Transportation Committee in the morning. So those two rooms are where I go back and forth. Luckily, they're across the hall from each other. And in the Institutions Committee particularly, we're looking at other ways of financing. Institutions is in charge of the Capital Bill, which is the um bill that funds capital projects, which are are projects that have a a life of um uh at least more than um five years, hopefully more than twenty years. And we're looking at with the Treasurer at other ways of financing, especially potentially schools, because part of the school conversation is to figure out how to either replace or upgrade our um school buildings, because many of our school buildings are obsolete. Many of them have um uh uh safety issues um that we don't have the capacity to fully address at this time. So the Institutions Committee is working hard on on finding um other forms of funding and preferably long-term funding rather than short-term funding, because we've put the onus onto towns to fund or school districts, which are often towns, to to fund schools. And that's just not something especially small towns are are able to do in a reasonable way. So let me talk a little bit about Transportation Committee. I'm so excited about the grant that Newfane got for um Route Thirty. I don't know if all of you are aware of it, but the um sidewalks, or you all know about it. Oh, my gosh. All right, well. It's it's a um so.
Senator Harrison?
Yeah.
I'm very sorry to interrupt. There are people in the back who are standing. There are seven open seats in the first three rows, if you'd like to come forward. Yep, so ra- raise your hand, please, if there's a seat next to you, so that someone knows they can come and sit and. And then um I don't know if I should address this question to Jay or to Steve. Are there additional chairs we could bring up? If there's anyone who would be willing to help Steve bring some chairs up from downstairs so everybody can be comfortable, that would be great. Thank you, everybody, for being accommodating. And Emily and Wendy, how long do we have the pleasure of being with you?
I can be short if you want to get back.
No, it was the opposite. I wanted to know if you had to get on the road.
We're we're fine.
Okay, you're okay on time?
Yes, another half hour.
Are you okay continuing even though people will be bringing up chairs?
Oh, of course.
Okay. All right. Thank you for tolerating the interruption. And now if you could tell us what the town of Newfane has received, that would be great.
Okay. So uh there are competitive grants for transportation for all different sorts of things, um for um design and then for implementation. And um Newfane received a grant for improving or actually creating, in some cases, sidewalks along Route Thirty where the um store is. So it's it's really good. I mean, that's that's there's a there's a problem there. And so uh you received a grant a couple of years ago for the initial design, and now you have a grant for the um full design, and it will likely lead to improved raised sidewalks or I'm sorry, raised uh crosswalks, if if you're familiar with that. So it'll have a traffic calming impact. So your your downtown will be much safer and just from a a state and um uh I'm sorry. Yes, it's it's not Williamsville, but it's I mean, Williamsville is part of Newfane.
It is.
Yeah.
The reason I mentioned it now, Williamsville, is because there's been a lot of talk about the dangers in Williamsville of walking by the sidewalk, too. And I know you all know that, we're sitting here in Williamsville, but.
Right, and that's.
One step at a time.
Right, and that's a problem. But this this one, I think, is particularly, uh obviously, it'll help you, which is critical, but it also sets a new um benchmark for the for the state, because the state doesn't typically do these kinds of um projects on um rural roads that that don't have a lot of stop signs. So so this is really good. So so the Newfane portion will um uh be much safer. And this area, it also is getting talked about, because the the traffic is just much too fast. It's 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 really a a speed issue. Uh and there are things that the town and the state can can work on. But in terms of facilities, it will be helpful that the Newfane project is happening and then Williamsville can also benefit from that. So congratulations.
Um for those folks who have joined since you got here, if you could reintroduce yourself, probably not necessary, but just so everybody knows who you both are.
So Wendy Harrison, I'm one of your two state senators.
Emily Long, Representative of live in Newfane, Representative Newfane Townsend and Marlborough.
Great. If there are questions about.
The person in front of Sam Dutton, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. If you could state your name and your town, yes.
Dana Hickens, Newfane. Um, just curious, who is the grant from and do you have the funds?
You do have the.
Did anyone hear the question?
No.
Do you want me, yeah, so the the question that I heard was, uh who is the grant from and do you have the funds? The grant is from the state, the the state of Vermont, and VTrans administers the grant. My understanding is that, yes, you do have the funds.
Eric, when does the work start and where can we see the plans for it?
I would suggest that you contact um Colin Bratton of the Wyndham Regional Commission. He's the transportation planner for the Regional Commission, and he'll be able to give you the details.
Um, can we ask, Auntel, Newfane, has the select board been made aware of receiving this grant?
Well, why?
Yes, that's right. You got lost here.
Yeah.
We talked about it. It was we talked about scoping study we did two years ago.
Yeah.
So this is not new? This is a year ago?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
It hasn't happened yet, but we still don't have the final paperwork from the state yet.
Okay.
It's still in process, nothing's. But the scoping study is on the website. Anybody who wants to see what was done a couple of years ago to get to this point.
Tell website.
I I ideally, I should be, no, it's fine. It's fine. I'm just trying to really adhere to Robert's Rules of Order. Annie.
Annie Landberger, Williamsville. I just want to say that one of our villagers was just hit, not terribly, but hit by a speeding truck. Okay? It's right here in the village. I've worked on committees, many of us have worked on committees to ameliorate this situation. Their documents that high, it's gotta happen. This was an adult who was hit. It could have been a child.
Traffic safety is a, or is it okay?
Yeah, please.
Um, traffic safety is a huge issue just generally, and and it's a cause especially of children for um of death, honestly. So what I would recommend that the town do, if you haven't done it already, is have a representative on the Transportation Committee of Wyndham Regional Commission, and then you'll be aware of all of the um opportunities. But there are, I mean, there were two years ago, um conversations going on about how to slow traffic in front.
The gentleman in the back with your hand up.
Seve Hall from Newfane. I wanted to ask both of you your position on the bill, uh H fifty-four, which is the same as Senate Twenty-One, introduced by Alson Hall in the in the House and by Gary Williams in the Senate, on cell phone-free schools. It's a very good uh prologue, safe purpose. This bill proposes to prohibit the use of cell phones and personal electronic devices during school day in public schools, independent schools, career and technical education centers, and pre-qualified private kindergarten, pre-kindergarten programs, as well as to prohibit schools communicating with students through social media. I'd like to update on your views on that particular bill.
Thanks, Seve. I know you and I have had this conversation many times, and I'm sure we'll continue to have this conversation. Um, I absolutely support um a ban on cell phones in schools. There's no question about it. Whether I will support H fifty-four, I I can never say how I'm going to vote on a bill until our committee has taken it up. All we've done is an introduction in our committee, um but in concept, I absolutely support it. I think it's um a serious distraction. In fact, I will just say, um, I think it was Thursday or Friday of this past week, we had a um quite a good turnout in our committee of students um from the Youth Council in the state of Vermont come and talk to us about um the implementation that many schools um are undertaking already. This is happening in our schools already. There are bans going on and different way, schools are handling it in different ways. They spoke very strongly in favor of a ban on cell phones. Some of them spoke about how um in the beginning, they fought it tooth and nail, can't be without my phone. My parents didn't want me to not have my phone, because they couldn't get a hold of me in an emergency and all of that. But in the end, there wasn't one student, of course, they were there advocating for legislation, but there wasn't one student who said, didn't tell us how important it was and how much better life is in school um without their cellphone in their pocket all the time or in their hand all the time. Many schools implement this by having um bell-to-bell bans. So they leave their, they can bring their cell phones to school, but they leave them in the office in one form or another. The reason I am not saying yes, I will support H fifty-four at this point in time is because I need to see the bill fleshed out. What I don't want is to have another unfunded mandate on school districts. So I need to know how um each school district will implement it. And frankly, school districts are telling us they're doing it many different ways. So um we're we're gonna work on it. I have to admit, we've been a little busy with a pretty major education transformation bill, which has required a ton of um a ton of witness testimony and research and work in our committee. So um I'm still pressuring the Chair of the Committee to take this bill up. Whether we take elements of it and put it in a miscellaneous ed bill, whether we pass this one bill, I I'm not sure yet, but I think it's really important, um and I think we need to move forward with it.
I also agree that uh phones should not be available to kids in schools. And I have, uh in in the Institutions Committee, we're now the Institutions and IT Committee, and we just passed out a bill last week. It's S sixty-nine, and it's Kids Code, if you've heard of that at all. Um, there's an article in Digger about it. And what it addresses is the algorithms and the coding, not the content, but the actual coding that large uh social media primarily companies use to get kids addicted to their phones. And there are also additional harms, um even more than the addiction. I mean, they are, these kids, um when you ask them to put down their phones, they actually uh start shaking. I mean, it's it's really sad, and it's it's harming our kids' mental health, and it's also harming our kids physically. We learned in testimony that some of these companies provide kids information, even when they know that the kids are kids. In the one case that we heard, the girls were twelve and said they were twelve, um provide those their information and connect them to predators. And there's a a lawsuit in Vermont that's that is alleging that. So we need to protect our children. And this bill, which um was passed unanimously by both the House and the Senate last year, but it didn't make it through, because it got combined with another bill, um I am going to do everything I can to make sure this bill gets through. Um, so so we are, we should make crossover. Crossover is only on, it's the uh March fourteenth.
Could you explain crossover?
Oh, thank you. Um, so crossover is the date by which bills need to be approved, either by the Senate to go to the House or by the House to go to the Senate. And um it's, this year, it's March fourteenth. And so I, we should make, this this bill will make it logically, because I'm going to report it next next week, as soon as we get back. So it will get to the House. Hopefully, it'll have a good result in the House. But it's just so, so important that that we provide, that we um protect our kids. And um I'm I'm leaving some materials, and there's some on the Kids Code there. Uh, it's uh S sixty-nine. There's two more data privacy bills. We're going to take up one of them. Um, we already, we just started taking it up last week, and we're going to hopefully finish that as soon as we can. But Kids Code is a priority to me, because they are intentionally harming kids, they're getting kids addicted, and it's actually their their model of of um uh their economic model, because they know if they get kids addicted, young, they'll be um uh customers for life. It's it's basically what what the tobacco companies did, and now they're doing it to our kids. So um the other things I was going to tell you about, um, I can tell you a little, uh let me talk a little bit about housing, if if you don't mind, is that um the last, I'm not currently on the Housing Committees. I was on the Housing Committees last session and um very involved in in the in what we did. And housing is being developed. What we did was it, it was two phases. It was one phase mandated certain types of zoning in towns, because some towns zone out housing, um especially affordable housing. And the other one um uh made massive changes to Act Two-Fifty. And so the changes to Act Two-Fifty are still in process, but there are temporary exemptions to Act Two-Fifty that were very carefully thought out, and those exemptions are resulting in much uh more housing. Um, we've had in um Brattleboro a thousand units. So and I have a little article on that on the on the back of of my um handout. But it's just important that you know that housing is being developed, and it's being developed in places that have water and sewer. Now, a lot of towns, like this town, have very limited water or sewer. And what we're doing in various places, but also but in the um in my in the Institutions Committee, we're looking at other ways, other methods for especially wastewater that don't require a whole wastewater treatment plant. Um, there there are soil-based methods. And we're we're looking at ways to get funding for those smaller systems out in the rural areas so that the rural areas can also um have more housing. And one other thing on housing, one of the. And one other thing on housing, one of the requirements that we made for towns is that anywhere single-family housing is permitted, duplexes are allowed. And so, because duplexes have a minimal impact on the neighborhood, on the environment, but they can have a big impact on how much housing there is, because you can essentially double the amount of housing that you have. And it can also be a revenue source, speaking of revenue sources, I'll circle back from that. The way we heard from folks was they would like to have an additional unit either for a family member, an older family member, or perhaps young people who are, are just finding their way. But it could also be used as a rental. So, so it gives Vermonters another way to use their property and have, get some income. So I think that's probably enough for now.
Is there a question in the back?
Jen Stanfield of the Roadworks side of the town. I just wanted to pick up with Annie Broadhead about the traffic problem. You know, Route 30 has gotten lots of attention, rightly so, for years. But the traffic, I think for 22 years, we've seen the traffic patterns change drastically because we are Williamsville, and then through South Newfane, through Eastover, are now the major routes, Mount Snow. And that means that we can't walk in our village. South Newfane people can't walk in the village. So just as a reminder, as the town's looking at Route 30, also be working, Williamsville, South Newfane, and Brookside, in the upper town.
Yes.
Harris Walts, Newfane. I'm heartened to hear your interest in protecting vulnerable young Vermonters. I'm curious to hear where you stand on the Global Warming Solutions Act and Act 18, which have a great potential to harm vulnerable Vermonters of all ages and profit exclusively the electric companies. The Global Warming Solutions Act that Vermont passed allows any body or individual to sue the state if the state isn't making sufficient progress towards global warming, which Vermont has, you know, almost zero impact on, and strongly incentivizes people to switch to electricity, and penalizes them for using fossil fuels, such as propane and heating oil, highly taxing those to make it almost economically impossible for people to continue using those heating sources. Yet for those of us who live in very rural areas such as Newfane, we are often out of electricity for five days, which is five days, sometimes more, but certainly three days, which doesn't allow people to have sufficient electricity to keep their homes. If they have an electric car, their car won't be charged without a backup of propane or heating fuel oil, and the heat pumps often don't work without a backup when it's super duper cold. So I'd encourage you to vote, to repeal both of those. Allow people to use electricity if they'd like for their heating and for their car, but not penalize people who are using other fuels, which are more reliable and dependable when the power goes out.
Okay, a couple of things. I do support the Global Warming Act, and I support it for multiple reasons. A primary one is that the various parts of the act have been tailored and written so that they don't put a harm on individuals, especially lower-income families. There's no requirement that you not use fossil fuels. There's an incentive to, to have folks switch over to electric, but there's no requirement. And I myself have multiple sources of, of energy in my house, and I, I want multiple sources of energy. I think that's a smart thing to do. But the intent is to, the intent of all of the different parts, and it's, it's a huge act. I mean, there's, there's, I think, 12 different pieces of it that have been done over 20 years. I mean, this isn't, this isn't something brand new. But the intent is to make newer technologies affordable for everyone, because newer technologies have been affordable for people who have more money, and they have taken advantage of that. But the folks who can't afford it have not gotten, have not had the opportunity to take advantage of that.
And I'll just add on top of that, agree with what was just stated, but also that I did vote for the Global Warming Solutions Act, and I do support it. Climate resiliency is critical and is becoming more and more critical in our state and in our country and our world. And it also costs money to implement new legislation, so we're trying to be, again, incredibly thoughtful about how we move forward, but we're not looking, or at least I'm not looking, and it sounds like Senator Harrison isn't either, to roll back our regulations that we have implemented over the years. How we move forward is a different story. Whether we're gonna have federal funding, which we rely on for subsidies to help people get off of fossil fuels, still remains to be seen. So we don't want to negatively impact Vermonters, but by, by turning our back on the work we've done on climate resiliency, that does impact Vermonters in a negative way. It impacts the world in a negative way. So we need to make sure that we're being very thoughtful about climate resiliency. Flooding, as you all know, in this state has decimated areas, and there's many other impacts as well. So we just want to make sure we're staying on top of it, so.
If there are no other objection, no objections, okay, I'm, I'm aware of the time, it's 10:00 a.m., and I know people have other commitments today, and we have a meaty topic in Article 38. So who's still, who has a burning question that they really need to ask?
Everybody has a burning question.
Okay, so Gerald, and then Joyce, and then, I know it's, this is a wonderful opportunity to get to speak with you both, and I don't want to take that for granted, and I think we should continue on with the business of town meeting. So Gerald, and then Joyce, and then we'll...
Thank you, Emily and Annie, for being here and entertaining this, extra questions. It affects all of us, because I, I guess I want to know, how much do you have the ear of our governor, as he is a member of the party, as well as your other colleagues in the legislature? Are members of the party that are administrating, that are tearing apart so many of our programs, locally, nationally, globally? And I guess I want to know, how much can you talk to your colleagues about preserving things like our postal service, Medicare, public schools, meals on wheels? And I can go on, and every one of us in this room, either we are directly affected, or we have friends, neighbors, families who are affected by this. How can we preserve these that aren't just being hacked away with a chainsaw? You know, will we receive our, our social security checks? Will tax refunds? Because those programs, the employees are being fired. So how much influence do you have with our governor and your public colleagues to please bring this message to the national level?
Thank, thank you, Gerald, for the question. It is, it pains me almost every day, and it's hard to even watch what's happening, unfolding in this country. How much influence do we have over the governor? I, I think, you know, there is a, there is a separation certainly between the legislature and the administration on a daily basis, but we, we don't, as legislators, meet with the governor regularly. Our leadership does, though. And in fact, our leadership meets with the governor at least once a week. And we are pressuring our leadership, which now I'm not a member of, to make sure that we are trying to do our best to preserve the, the support that Vermonters need. I, I can't speak for the governor. I hope everybody feels comfortable reaching out to the governor's office. You should. You should also be reaching out to your federal delegation, who have been working collectively, collaboratively in Washington to push back on what we've seen unfolding down there. I am very proud of the work they're doing down there, but Vermont has three representatives in Congress, and other states have many more. So it, it's a real concern. It's going to impact us. We, we know at midnight tariffs went into effect. We don't have support for that. What I want to see from my governor, and I'm speaking for myself, no one else, but I want to see my governor speak out against what is happening. And I have not really seen that. I want to see it. I want to keep talking about it ourselves. And I want Vermonters to speak out. I, we, we need your support when we are speaking at our level and when we're putting pressure down on the governor. I will just say, the work we do in the State House, in the legislature, in our committee rooms, we, we don't, we aren't like what you see in Washington. We work very closely with our colleagues. We really do. I spent, like I said, eight years in leadership, the last four years as the majority leader, and I had a very collegial relationship, and still do, with a minority leader in the House. The Republican minority leader, there's several minority leaders, but the Republican minority leader. And while we didn't vote the same, we do work closely together and do have many of the same goals. And I'm gonna continue to try to make sure that we are working as closely as we can with each other, so that we can get stuff done. But we don't have the votes in the House or in the Senate to override a veto of the governor, if that happens. We've done that over the last number of years. Doesn't mean we can't override a veto, we just need to make sure that we have our colleagues' support to be able to do that. What I'd really like is to have a lot less vetoes. And so we're gonna continue to work with the administration and with our colleagues across the aisle in the House, and I know in the Senate, and try to encourage our governor to speak out against what's happening in Washington.
You said it well.
And very briefly, Joyce.
My question is about...
Could you please identify yourself in your town?
Joyce Van Pamela from Williamsville. And I'm concerned about the, the rollout and the changes of changing the school district superintendencies from 32 to 5. And I was wondering what your, what you might, ah, you're just snorting it. So I'm, I'm just curious.
So...
Good luck answering that briefly.
I was just gonna say, oh, I know she's gonna yank me, and well, I won't be able to say all I want to say about this. And I would encourage anybody who wants to talk to me in detail, get ahold of me, and in fact, Beckley, when am I in, when am I at Moore Free Library? Can't remember, two weeks from Saturday? Yeah. So, so come see me at Moore Free Library when I hold my monthly office hours there to talk about this in detail. But the governor's proposal is a two-year rollout of a very significant shift in the way we fund and operate our public education system. It does go from 119 school districts that we have today to five. That seems incredibly unlikely that we will be at five. And the reason I say that is because even in our bipartisan committee, which we have 11 of, and for Republicans on there, I think while they might support the governor's bill, they recognize that five school districts in the state of Vermont would be an incredibly significant change. So how we move forward with the bill and the work that we're trying to accomplish remains to be seen, but I don't think we're gonna be seeing five districts. But I do think that there's pretty significant pressure to reduce the number of school districts in the state. And I think we're gonna see something happening. I don't, don't expect that your change will happen next year, all of a sudden your school district will change to the county. But I do think that there's probably going to be some significant change. Please stay in touch with me about the work we're doing. But the cost of education is becoming unsustainable, and one of the concerns I have about the governor's bill is that as we've been looking at what their proposals are, it appears that it's going to cost more money, not save money. And so at this point in time, we're not gonna move forward with something that's gonna actually cost more. Some of the, I mean, you know, granted, he's making recommendations to, to pay teachers more, and the only way we could, we, we support paying our teachers more, we truly do. But the only way to pay teachers more and get $180 million in tax relief is to reduce the number of teachers we have, reduce the number of staff we have. So again, it's all the devil's in the details. We only got the full bill on Thursday or Friday, I can't remember which day. And we're looking deeply into it, but please stay in touch. We need to figure out what our steps forward are gonna be.
And could you both share your email addresses and phone numbers really quickly?
Sure, mine's also in my...
Okay. Emily, is there anything printed from you?
I haven't, there's nothing printed on there, but as you all know, our A legislator can be reached by our first initial and our last name, so mine is ewong@leg, L-E-G dot state dot V T dot U S.
And I have a comment or a notice from Nader Hashim, because he's on the Education Committee in the Senate, and so I just wanted to let the folks know that their committee will be mainly focusing on district sizes and where rulemaking authority lies, and rulemaking is a priority for him, because that's where the rubber meets the road. And I will be at the Townsend Library some, one of the Saturdays of this, of this month, so you can check that out. So, and thanks for great questions.
Thank you so much for being here and for taking your time.
And I'll just say, I also go to the Townsend Library, keep an eye on that. They invite us, we come. In Newfane, I'm regularly, thank you to the Moore Free Library for hosting me. I'm there every month. Please come whenever you can. And, you know, the legislative website, that you can just click, just, just Google Legislature, Vermont Legislature, and you'll come to the legislative website. You can get ahold of us through that and read, and honestly, you can witness in, on video, any of our testimony in our committees, and you should, I encourage you to do that, and then get ahold of us. So thank you all so much for having us.
Before we turn to the warned articles, a few things that, there are town reports up front, as well as information, I believe, about the new housing grant program. Since the metal chairs are loud, if someone could help set them up along this side of the room, and then for folks who are standing there, again, could you raise your hand if there's still an empty seat next to you? So raise your hand high if there's an empty seat next to you. So for anyone in the back who would like to either sit here, up in front, or along this side, that would be, please feel free to do so. So help moving those chairs would be great. Thank you. If you could please check and make sure your cell phones are silenced, that would be great. I want to recognize anyone who's here to Newfane Town Meeting for the first time. Welcome. Wonderful to have you. And then are there any non-residents here? Jen, could you please stand up and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Jen Stromston. I work at the Bratton Road, Government Credit Corporation. I'm here to represent Stevens and answer your questions. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. And then lastly, I would like to thank the Select Board for all of the very hard work that you do, hours and hours, and a lot that none of us are aware of. And especially Anne Golub and Katie Johnson, Applin, and Jeff are this, are stepping off the board as of today, correct?
Uh, that's me, Angela, which is my stepmother.
Oh, you're the only one stepping off. Okay. So Angela is stepping off, and Carol, our, can you wave, our wonderful town clerk, is retiring, and I want to thank Jen. I didn't ask you ahead of time, because I thought you'd say I shouldn't, couldn't do it, so. Okay, so returning to Article 4, yes, Tristum.
All right, Tristum Johnson, Newfane. She runs a hell of a tight voting system. The other thing I wanted to say was that somebody dropped this right by our desk here, we don't know who owns it, it's a set of notes, and anyway. And anyway, if this looks familiar, come again. Thank you.
Okay. And once again, if I could appeal to a few of you to take the metal chairs that are leaning against the banister there and set them up on this side of the room for people who come in and don't want to disrupt the meeting, they will have a place to sit. Thank you so much. Okay. Back to Article 4 in our town warning. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for town and highway operating expenses of which $1,421,998 shall be raised by taxes, and $348,815 by non-tax revenues, and $125,000 by surplus funds? Thank you. Could you--
Second.
And second, Bob Lyons, Newfane. Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 4? Yes. I'm sorry, Diane.
Diane Eklund, Newfane. What is the source of the non-tax revenue?
Missy, are you able to--
If you look on page 13, everything under property taxes, all the way down to the bottom, or certainly all revenue, like curries, pilot, council revenue, dollarway surplus.
Diane, do you see what Melissa's referring to?
Yep, there.
Okay. For those of you who do not know, Melissa Brown is our town treasurer and she is the person who compiled all this information. Thank you, Missy. Is there another question, comment about Article 4? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to vote. Oh, excuse me, yes. Jessie, could you introduce yourself?
I'm here in the usual. I just think if this is important, could talk a little bit about how this relates to past budgets and anything significant about this that impacted the budget.
Katie, could you repeat the question in the mic so that everybody can hear it? Thank you.
The basic gist of what Jessie asked was how this is similar to previous budgets and what impacts those changes. Yeah, do you want to? Or I'll do a summary and then you can fill in. How's that work? This year's biggest changes in our budget had to do with health insurance, which went up by about $50,000 for our seven employees who have health insurance. That's how much. It's nuts. And other than that, we had essentially level funding all the way across, very small amounts of bump ups for various materials the road crew needs. And other than that, it was fairly much level funding across the board. Melissa, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, it's pretty much standard all the way across. Things are more expensive, so that's what causes a lot of the increases. We had surplus this year that we could use to reduce the taxes.
Was everyone able to hear Melissa's response?
So everything was pretty much similar to last year. There was no major changes. But we did have surplus that we could use to put towards reducing the taxes this year.
So overall, the taxes are?
Hopefully going down a little bit.
At least the town portion.
Providing the grand list stays the same. Yeah, the town portion.
Is there any more discussion on Article 4?
Hi, Emmett Madoff, Williamsville. I guess I'm wondering if, is there a sense of like, generally, what portion is like recurring versus like what's, you know, a special occasion for the year, I guess?
It's a little hard to say because--
Anne, could you please use the mic?
Sorry. It's a little hard to say exactly what the proportions are. I don't know if Melissa has a sense of it. But most of these numbers, we review them in our budget meetings, which everyone is welcome to, believe you me. And we go through each one of the numbers. And usually, there's some adjustment for inflation. And then there are some that tend to jump up considerably. And then there are certain capital funds that we have to consider, particularly if there's a road crew need for a new truck or new equipment and the like. And those tend to be the biggest ticket items after the insurance. The insurance has been, you know, nationally, this has been the big issue. And we are not exempt from that. But I would just like to say that Melissa has done a brilliant job in finding every little piece of savings she could and every place where we could apply our surplus to help holding the line on the taxes. So we all have a lot to thank her for.
Is there any more discussion on Article 4? Yes, Chris, excuse me. Could you please use the mic? Or at least stand up?
We can't hear the response. They need to either get closer to the microphone or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you. Yes, in the back. Okay. When the question is called, there is no debate. Calling question means that the discussion ends. And it requires a two-thirds vote. So if you are in support of ending discussion of Article 4, you will vote yea. If you would like the discussion to continue, you will vote nay. Does everyone understand what they're voting on? No, not on calling the question. Thank you, though. But I always appreciate parliamentary help. Actually, I stand corrected. Thank you. Is there a second to Michael's motion? Steve Levine, Williamsville. Thank you. I am always, I always invite corrections or points of order. So if you support calling the question, meaning ending discussion of Article 4, please say aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed and would like to continue the discussion, please say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Discussion ends. We will, you will now vote on Article 4. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for town and highway operating expenses of $1,895,813, of which $1,421,998 shall be raised by taxes, and $348,815 by non-tax revenues, and $125,000 by surplus funds? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 4 passes. Article 5. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize capital fund expenditures of $467,000, of which $413,500 shall be raised by taxes, and $12,000 by non-tax revenues, and $41,500 by general funds surplus? Do I, would anyone like to move? What is the pleasure of the assembly? Is there a motion?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Carol, you got that? Lindsay?
Bertram.
Bertram? And I heard several seconds, Tom Bedell, Williamsville? Great. Is there any discussion on Article 5? Okay. It appears that we're ready to vote on Article 5, which I am obligated to repeat again. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize capital fund expenditures of $467,000, of which $413,500 shall be raised by taxes, and $12,000 by non-tax revenues, and $41,500 by general surplus, funds surplus? All those in favor of Article 5, please say yea.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Article 5 passes as presented. Article 6. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize debt service fund expenditures of $51,950, of which $44,173 shall be raised by taxes, and $7,777 by debt service surplus? Is there anyone who would like to move that?
Darren Ray, Williamsville, so moved.
Carol, did you get that? Okay. Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Who? Christine White? Second. Is there any discussion on Article 6? Yes, Dan.
Dan, all of South Newfane. Could someone explain to us whether this is debt incurred by the town by Orwell that we're talking about? Or debt owed to the town? Could we just have a bit of explanation?
So this is debt that we owe. One of them is for the bridge and then the gravel pit. And the excavator lease is part of it, but it's warned as a separate article because it's mandatory according to the lease.
Any further discussion or questions on Article 6? Okay. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize debt service fund expenditures of $51,950, of which $44,173 shall be raised by taxes, and $7,777 by debt service surplus? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 6 passes as written. Article 7. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $25,467 for the annual excavator lease payment for fiscal year 2026? Is there, someone like to move the--
Neil Belz, so low.
I'm second.
Joyce Van Pamelin, Newfane, second. Is there any discussion on Article 7? You're all unusually quiet. Okay. Seeing no hands up. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $25,467 for the annual excavator lease payment for fiscal year 2026? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 7 as presented passes. Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $6,750 for the reappraisal reserved fund for fiscal year 2026? Please state your name and town.
Yonja Bae, Williamsville.
Even if I know you and Carol knows you, Robert's Rules of Order do require that you state your name and your town. I'm not just trying to be a pain. Is there any discussion on Article 8?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris Trebert, South Newfane. Thank you. It's a group effort. Is there any discussion on Article 8? Yes, Patty.
Patty Johnson, Newfane. What is the reappraisal reserve fund?
The question was, what is the reappraisal reserve fund?
We are going to have a reappraisal done this year. So for the last eight years, I believe, or number, number of years, we've been putting money aside every year to pay for the reappraisal so it would not hit our budget all at one time and cause all of us to go, huh. So we've been saving up for it every year. And it goes into a special fund that can only be used for that purpose.
Thank you.
Yes, Diane.
Diane from, Diane Eklund, Newfane. Will this amount cover the cost of the reappraisal?
Yeah, so we needed like $135,000 total. The state also pays $13,000 a year that we have to keep in a separate fund for that. So this is just the final pieces that we needed to make up that whole contract amount for the whole reappraisal.
Any other questions or comments on Article 8? Okay. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $6,750 for the reappraisal reserved fund, reserved fund for fiscal year 2026? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And Article 8 passes as written. Article 9. For folks who are standing in the back, there are a few chairs up front if you would like to sit down. And then there's one chair right over here if you would also like to sit down. And there are more chairs leaning against the banister as well. Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane-- Oh, I'm sorry, Sherri.
Hi, Sherri Zabriski, South Newfane. Could I make a request that all of you up there introduce yourselves with your name before you speak for those of us who don't know you? Thanks.
Yes, let's, I made myself a note to do that at the beginning next year. And if you could just take this opportunity and go down the row and introduce yourself.
I'm Angela Litchfield from Newfane, and I'm the chair.
I'm Anne Golub. I'm the vice chair.
About two inches away so you can hear. I'm going in the mic.
Anne Golub.
From where, Anne?
South Newfane. Can I just make one other clarification? We are all from the town of Newfane. Right? We are all from the town of Newfane. We have four different villages in the town of Newfane. Newfane, Williamsville, South Newfane, and Brookside. But we are all Newfainers.
I'm Katie Johnson Applin, and the village I live closest to is Brookside.
Could you use Katie's?
Yeah. Jeffrey Chevalier. I live in Williamsville, resident of Newfane. And this is my last year on the Select Board. And I want to thank you all for, for voting for me and letting me be here.
Uh, Mike Fitzpatrick, Newfane. Behind Dutton's, I guess, or you call it, so.
I'm Carol Hesselbeck. I'm here to talk until nine o'clock tonight.
Um, and just to clarify, any interruptions like that that have to do with procedure, safety, ability to hear, interrupt me or anyone else speaking at any time. So Sherri, thank you for that suggestion. Article Nine. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane vote to eliminate the office of constable pursuant to Title Seventeen VSA, Section Two-Six-Five-One A.D.? What is the pleasure of the body? Is there someone who will move that? And Tom Bedell, second?
Point of information?
I'm sorry?
I said just point of information.
Yes.
I would like to, um, just, uh, give some background about why this is on the warning this year and, um, the thinking of the Select Board. I know we've put this on everyone's chairs, but I thought I would just talk to it briefly. I'm sorry that it wasn't in the town report. Um, we have had a difficult time filling the position of, uh, town constable every year. And Archer Mayor would graciously, uh, fill the position uh, each time that the Select Board would come and ask him. This year, I believe someone is actually running for that, um, uh, position. And I forget who it is, but thank you.
Eric DeRocher.
Thank you. So thank you to Eric. Um, so I'll say why we're asking to eliminate the role. The role has changed considerably over the years. In the past, the constable was, functioned pretty much like a police officer and could carry a weapon. Since 2011, constables may not do that anymore unless they have completed a hundred and ninety hours of training to receive certification that grants them law enforcement authority. The town of Newfane relies on the state police and on the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office for all law enforcement responsibilities. We do not empower the constable to do any of that. And let's be clear that if the constable did have any of those functions, there would be certain risks upon the town if any, if there were any problems in the functioning of that role. So constables in towns have responsibility, in other towns have responsibilities such as, uh, collecting unpaid taxes. However, we have a separate role for doing that, which is the collector of delinquent taxes, which is filled by our treasurer at this time. They also have the ability to destroy animals or kill injured deer. We have both of those responsibles, uh, responsibilities managed by our animal office control, uh, person who is out of the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office. So all of those critical functions, we have held by other offices. So the role has become largely, I don't know, archaic. Just a liability. There are some other responsibilities that a constable can be asked to fulfill. Uh, just briefly, those are serving civil or criminal processes, assisting the health officer, serving as a district court officer, or removing disorderly people from town meeting. To date, in the time that I've been around, there's never been a need to call the constable to fulfill those roles. Should there be, the Select Board can request another officer of the town to take on those responsibilities. So for all of those reasons, the Select Board decided to put this warning on the, um, to put this article on the warning this year. If you vote in favor of removing the role, it does not go into effect now. It would go into effect in one year. So Eric is running for, uh, constable this year. If he wins, then he would become the constable for this year. If you vote for this article, that would be the last constable that Newfane would have. Thank you.
Um, just before we continue, Phil and Sarah, could I trouble you to take the folding chairs that are leaning against the banister and set them up, um, on? And there's no room? Steve, do, what are the fire laws in terms of more chairs? Okay, we're, we're, it's, we're, we're, it's wonderful, we're coming close, but I don't think we're there. So, um, Phil and Sarah, would you be willing to bring chairs up in front for those who would like to be seated? Thank you so much.
Can there maybe another role beside? To increase their workplace?
There's certain, there are fire laws that we need to keep in mind. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Phil. So for those of you who are in the back or those of you who are voting would like to sit down after you vote, there are additional chairs up front. Thank you both so much. Are there any other, is there any other discussion on Article Nine? Yes, Walter?
Walter Phelps, Williamsville. Can you hear me?
Please use the mic. Thank you so much.
Walter Phelps, Williamsville. I'd like to address this article in the warning. And I would like to urge people to vote it down. The, the office of constable in Newfane, it is true, is rarely used for anything. It is not necessarily, however, an archaic office like a fence viewer or a Hayward, something like that. There are towns in Vermont that use the constables for other purposes. One of those purposes is speed enforcement. There are towns in Vermont that, uh, use the town constable to ticket speeding motorists, use the money that they take in to pay that constable, and it works out to be a pretty good system. One case in point is Mount Tabor, Vermont. A little town on Route Seven, uh, near Danby. They have two-hundred-and-fifty-five people, more or less. They have a constable, uh, he writes about two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a year in tickets. That goes into the town coffers, certainly pays, uh, that person a good salary, pays for the cruiser, pays for all of that. It does require, that person does need to have that training. Hundred ninety hours of, uh, police academy training. However, there are people with that training. Deputies, so on and so forth. Any person like that does have that kind of training. Anyway, uh.
Well, Walter, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you please address the moderator?
Yes.
Thank you.
So there are towns where the office of constable is used in a different way. I would like to suggest that the current problem, if, if, if we vote to abolish the office of constable, we will never get it back. It'll be gone for good, and we will never have that option. I'm not saying we should use that option, but we will never have that option if we abolish it now. There is another route that can be taken to address some of the concerns of the Select Board. And that is a vote. It requires Australian ballot, it would happen next year, uh, and a two-thirds vote to change the office of constable from elected to appointed. That has some advantages in that the Select Board then has control over who they appoint, if they appoint. They have control over what that person will be paid. If they did want to have a law enforcement officer, they could advertise with somebody with, that has those qualifications and, uh, appoint them. Because, because they are appointed, if, if we voted next year to switch from an elected constable to an appointed constable, the Select Board would have complete control over that individual. Something that doesn't happen if it's an elected position. In any event, uh, with all due respect to the Select Board and the understanding their considerations, I would urge voters to vote this article down because it eliminates an opportunity that we might want to take advantage of in the future. And I would suggest that instead, next year, we have an article to change the position of town constable from elected to appointed. Thank you.
Uh, I have a, a point of inquiry for the Select Board. Can the body this year direct the Select Board to warn an article next year?
We'd have to ask P L C to report. They have the board leaving. It would have to be readdressed with the new board.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so it is not possible today to amend, as Walter is suggesting, to amend this article?
I did not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you did not suggest that.
I'm suggesting voting it down and taking this year to rebook at the topic. And perhaps pursue an alternative.
I, I'm just, uh, sorry, you did not say that. I'm just explaining that there is not the option today to amend this article. So if you support what Walter was saying, you would vote nay. And then there would, um, hopefully be a process next year to have the option of changing the constable's position from elected to appointed. But that's not up for discussion right now. I just want to make that clear. Okay, um, bunch of hands up, Annie?
Annie Landenberger, Williamsville. Um, I think we're in a great position. Um, we can, not a modern, um, we can.
Could you please use the mic?
Eric is a former student, and I just have to say.
Eddie, could you either use your theater voice or the mic?
Oh, really?
Okay, so I think we have a golden opportunity to, uh, to see what it's like to have a constable with an expanded job description as Walter put forth. I.e., maybe this is one of our avenues, no pun intended, for addressing our speeding nightmares. So, that's all.
Mary?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Could you please state your name?
I'm Mary Moriarty from Williamsville. I am, I don't know if I'm going to do this right, but I'm going to need your help.
Okay.
I, I am going to offer a friendly amendment. Well, maybe it's not so friendly. To Article Nine. To, instead of voting to eliminate the office, to spend the next year studying the alternative of having an appointed constable. Is that an appropriate amendment?
Um, yes, so Mary is moving to amend Article Nine to, instead of state that shall the voters of the town of Newfane vote to eliminate, the motion would read, shall the voters of the town of Newfane help direct the Select Board to establish a study committee? And can you finish the motion?
To establish a study committee in order to explore the alternative of an appointed constable going forward.
Is there a second to that amendment? Is there discussion of the amendment, the amended motion?
I would.
Okay, yes.
I would just like to amend it to say, to study also the costs associated with it. Because presumably, if you're going to use someone to do traffic control, they would need a vehicle from which to do it, as well as they would need, um, whatever other equipment. And they would need the ability to levy the fines and then have the fines collected. And you would need the ability to, um, pay the person. So all of those, if you're going to move it to a study, that would have to be essential components of the analysis.
Um, so I hear a little murmuring. Is there any confusion about what we are discussing at this very moment? Michael?
Point of order, uh, the amendment was initial, and we need to discuss the first amendment before we discuss the amendment.
Uh, I'm sorry, Michael, I couldn't hear you.
We need to use the mic.
Or just?
We need to discuss the initial amendment before discussing an amendment to an amendment.
Walter did not make a formal amendment? Yes, it was seconded. Mary, Mary's amendment was.
But then Ann made another.
Oh, right. Yes. Okay, thank you. Mary, could you please restate your amended motion? Thank you, Michael.
Shall the voters of the town of Newfane through the Select Board establish a study, however you want to say it?
Yeah.
Study to explore the possibility of having an appointed constable? Including the cost? All right, all right, I'll leave that off. I was just going to try and make it all one, but I'll leave it alone.
Okay, it is possible, according to Robert's Rules of Order, well, it was already seconded. So, Michael, from, this is the amendment that I thought we were discussing. So I'm not sure what you are referring to as the second, the amendment of the amendment. Okay, it is possible, if Mary agrees, that without having a whole vote, you could accept adding the cost to the amendment. Okay?
Yes.
Explore the possibility of having an appointed constable, including the cost of doing so. Is that, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Was that? I know there are a lot of parliamentarians in the room. Is there anyone who would, has a point of order? Yes, Walter?
I don't know, as I call myself a parliamentarian. However, with all due respect to the amendment, it seems that that is really not amending the article. It's changing it to a different article. And as such, uh, would not be permissible.
Okay, um, so this is where there's wiggle room. In my opinion as moderator, the amendment is germane. But I serve at your, I serve the Assembly. So if anyone feels that that is an incorrect ruling, then we can have a vote, and I can be overridden. Is that, Walter, is it enough of a concern for you that you would like to have?
I would like to see it handled in the most expeditious. As moderator, it is, in a, is not only qualified, but is, uh, suggested by the board.
Okay, thank you for the vote of confidence. Okay, so now, Tom, is this a point of order or a discussion of the amendment? The amended?
A discussion of the amendment.
Okay, I want to restate the amended motion so everybody's clear on what we're talking about. Yeah. So, the discussion that's about to ensue is about in, the amended motion that reads, shall the voters of the town of Newfane direct the Select Board to explore the possibility of having an appointed constable, including the cost of doing so? Was that?
That wasn't in the original amendment. That was added by.
No, but, but Mary has the right, before it was voted on, to agree to add to her amendment. Uh, and, no, it's fine, it's fine. I, I, I need to be held accountable. Um, and Mary agreed, maybe some folks missed that. And that is permitted under Robert's Rules of Order. Okay, so is every, hold on, is everyone clear on what you're discussing now?
Could you repeat the including, just?
Including the cost of doing so? Yep. Okay, so now we are discussing this amended motion. Annie?
Annie Lannenberg of Williamsville on microphone.
No, sorry, sorry, if someone asks to use the microphone, it means they're having trouble hearing. So I would ask that we do use the microphone. Thank you very much. I know it's a pain.
No, we're cool. So, two things. Should it say, and I'm not saying it should, but should it say, unappointed constable as opposed to an elected constable? That's...
Okay, sorry, the motion has already been made and seconded it, so...
Okay.
Are you proposing that?
I just want clarity. But anyway, and then my second point is this, and this is not directly on the motion. But I want to know, Eric's on the ballot. If he's elected, does he serve for the year? Okay, all right, just...
Okay, the Assembly answered, is that select board, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, in front here, your name, please, in town.
Deana Marger, Newfane. I liked the original question. I wanted to vote in favor of living in a town that doesn't have a constable. I like that idea. I have heard issues about speeding coming up. And I don't, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this in the past and that there is no time to have discussion about this now. I don't know where we landed on the issue of speed bumps because I really feel like speed bumps do slow people down. And I'd rather not have a constable. So I'm, if I'm understanding things correctly, then I would vote no to the amendment. Is that...
The amended motion, yes.
Okay, well, that's how I feel. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know your name, the woman with, your hand up. Could you please come to the mic, introduce yourself, and then speak? Thank you.
Are we talking about the amendment or are we talking about the actual article?
We are talking about the amended article.
Okay, I want to speak to the article.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, Tom Bedell. Just a little analysis for my own benefit here. If we vote in favor of the amendment, we've effectively defeated the original article. Correct? Okay.
So just to clarify what Tom said, if you vote aye for this amended motion, then the constable's position will not be eliminated automatically as a result of this town meeting. And instead, the select board will be directed to study the possibility of having an appointed constable and the cost of doing so. And I'll reiterate that before you all vote. Patty?
Patty Johnson from the historic village of Newfane, Vermont, which is part of the town of Newfane. I just have a question. If somebody's running for the position now, can that be used as part of the study ongoing for next year? And I just don't know where it comes under which amendment. But we're going to have somebody in the position. Can they be asked to qualify that for next year's amendment, non-amendment, additional amendment? Thank you.
Patty, is that a question to the select board or is that...
I don't know.
I can try and answer.
But we have somebody running, so it seems appropriate to use whatever information is ordered.
Okay, Angela's going to address the point.
I think that would be the most appropriate use of resources, that if we have a constable, that they notate and report back to the select board numbers, issues, and what's going on so that it can be part of the study.
Thank you.
Are there any other points of discussion or questions about the amended article? Emmett?
Emmett Madoffy, Williamsville. Probably a dumb question again, but...
No such thing as a dumb question.
Money from, like, current tickets on speeding issued by the police department, does that go to Wyndham County as an entity or does it come to Newfane? So we already have a way for speeding tickets to come and finance Newfane? Thank you.
A portion of the tickets do come to the town of Newfane.
Any other, any more discussion on the amended article? Okay. Yeah?
There's, the revenue that we've earned in the past years is on page 13 in your book, under judicial fines revenue. And it's about $4,000 a year.
In the town report?
Correct.
Fiona Chevalier, Newfane. The amount of tickets that we get is based on the amount of folk. There's only a limited number of hours. Do you need to use the mic?
Yes, please, thank you.
As I understand, Fiona Chevalier, Newfane, as I understand currently, the amount of hours that the police, sheriff's department is here is 12 a month? Is that, what is the, what is the number of hours that the sheriff's office is here a month in this town?
It's approximately seven and a half hours. Is that a week?
A week. Seven and a half hours a week. Okay. So, just keeping that in mind in terms of like the amount of revenue that comes in from tickets is very limited due to the fact that there's a limited number of hours that someone is in our town looking for speeders.
Is there any more discussion on the amended article? Okay. So the amended article, Article 9, reads, shall the voters of the town of Newfane direct the select board to explore the possibility of having an appointed constable, including the cost of doing so? An affirmative vote, an aye vote, means that you prefer this approach than eliminating the constable's position, which is how Article 9 was originally written. If you would prefer to have a vote on eliminating the position, you would vote nay. And then we would go back and have a discussion on the original article. Is everybody clear on what you're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the amended Article 9, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay!
The ayes appear to have it? You think it's close? Okay, I don't, I don't think it's close either. Someone could call for a division of the house if you would like. And then everyone would stand rather than have a voice vote. That is an option. But hearing no one, what?
Declare the result.
Okay. Is this a point of order? I'm sorry? We're not voting by standing yet. We're just voting by voice vote. Yes, did you not underst, do you want me to, you need to...
I understand what you said.
Okay. No, if anyone calls for a division of the house, then that's no worries at all. Okay, the ayes appear to have it? This is if you disagree, this is when you say so. The ayes have it, the amended Article 9 passes. So the school board has been directed...
Select board.
Select board, excuse me. Many years of chairing school board meetings. The select board has been directed to explore the possibility of having an appointed constable, including the cost of doing so. That is what was just approved. Okay, before we go on to Articles 10 through 37, if you would like to come and sit, there is a seat here. There are two seats here. There's a seat there. There's a seat here. Yes, Bucky? Is this a point of order?
Neil Pelzou, Madam Moderator, I'd like to make a procedural motion. I respectfully move, suggest that we consider Articles 10 through 37 as a group rather than consider them individually. If there are, well, I'd make that as a motion.
Okay, so... Okay, I saw and heard Lynn Bedell first.
So, can I speak to just...
Yes, the person making the motion is allowed to speak first.
So if anybody wants to modify any one of the individual articles, they may do so before voting on the...
Okay, the motion, as you stated it, was already seconded, but you have the right to amend it if you would like to.
No, I don't want to amend it. I'm just clarifying that if anybody wants to modify any one of the recommendations, they may do so after we act on this motion.
Okay, so rather than going through each Article 10 through 37 separately, we will be discussing them as a group. But that there still is the option of talking about a specific article, even though we're talking about them all together. CB, you had your hand up earlier. Are you all set? Okay, okay. Yes. Yeah, yeah, yes. Yes, let's, thank you. Let's take, I always forget to take breaks, so thank you for the reminder. It is just about 11 o'clock, five-minute recess. If there's a restroom, there are two restrooms back in the corner just before you go out the door. Dan, is this a point of order?
Two downstairs.
Yes, and their bathroom, two downstairs as well. So try to be efficient in meeting your needs. Okay. Our recess is officially coming to an end. We will pick up where we left off. But before that, if everybody could get settled, that would be great. If those who are chatting could wrap up the conversation, that would be great. I was thinking the same thing. Are you willing to? That's awesome.
I'm Tom.
Hi, oh yes, we met. Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, two housekeeping items. Carol Hesselbach, our town clerk, has been asked by a number of people what the Wi-Fi password is for the Grange. She doesn't know. Who, is Steve Levine here? Does anyone else know?
I know it now.
Okay, Brenda, could you, could you share it with everybody?
It's capital W H. Capital W H, 1910, with an asterisk on either side.
Okay, capital W H.
1910.
1910.
With an asterisk on either side.
With an asterisk in the beginning and the end. The Wi-Fi code for...
Capital W asterisk, capital W H, 1910, asterisk.
Okay, everybody got it? Please do make sure your cellphones are silenced. Okay, so before the break, a motion was made and seconded to vote on Articles 10 through 37 together. Before we can discuss that, that motion needs to be discussed and either approved or defeated. So is there any discussion, this is a process motion. Is there any discussion on the motion of grouping Articles 10 through 37 together? Ken. Tom is going to be bringing the mic around to folks so that people don't have to get up and come to the front each time.
Okay. Ken, SD, Newfane, Moderator. A similar process discussion or similar process suggestion occurred last year. And when I first heard it, I was like, yeah, let's do this. Let's get through this quickly. So I can definitely appreciate Mr. Pelzou's suggestion to move this along. However, I found that there was a great deal of value a year ago in deliberating article by article. And it very much helped me understand a lot better what we're supporting. And I might add too, as a side note, that it constitutes about 2% of our overall expense budget. So it's not huge. At the same time, these organizations are valuable, significant, and worthy of our attention. Thank you.
Lynn? And we're just discussing the merits and the disadvantages of grouping Articles 10 and 37 together.
While I totally agree that these organizations are valuable, we have to realize that the select board has read every one of these applications. They have put them in the morning. The nonprofits have put a statement of what it is they do for our town. And we should have all read it and then we would know how valuable they are. And as you pointed out, it's 2% of our budget.
Margaret? Did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh. Oh. Lindsay?
I just wanted to say that...
Could you please introduce yourself?
I'm Lindsay Bertram. I'm from Newfane, Williamsville. Anybody who comes forward to our select board and fills out the application gets put on the list, right? You guys don't vet these at all. You simply take their information and give it to us so that we can vet them and choose accordingly. Okay, so I just don't want anyone to think that these have been pre-vetted and pre-approved by our select board. So that's our job to do right now.
Any more discussion? Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I would just like, like what Lindsay said, I would just like to remind everybody that we start our budget season in October and we have meetings every Monday. And we invite everyone who is putting in a new application to come and present to the select board. And we invite the public to come and hear all of what's going on. And then we put it in our book, like she said. But everybody's welcome to our meetings and we appreciate it when you come. And when you have questions, we represent, we listen to everybody and what they have to say, so.
I just wanted to add that all of the organizations that are in the book are organizations that have come before Newfane in the past. So there are none of them that are totally new. There is a series of questions that we ask to make sure it makes sense, such as that they are providing services to people in Newfane along with their other responsibilities. So the vetting process, I would say, has been the fact that they have all been included in the past and discussed and provided funds in the past from the town.
Down here in front? Could you please stand and state your name in town?
I can do both.
Thank you.
Lesia Darling, South Newfane. This is the allocation of social services coming to two, less than, I'm sorry, 2%, was it? 2% of our total funds. I don't really see a need to do anything other than allocate them and agree your vote. And that's what I'm hoping to do. Do you want me to speak louder? Fantastic, okay. This is 2% allocated of our funds moving towards social services, which I personally think is a lot less than it needs to be. And I don't see any reason to do anything other than allocate them. If it were more than this, perhaps sitting down and like talking about it might help something, but 2% is almost nothing. And we do need them. It is things like SEVCA and social funds for children and education. That's all I got.
James Arslavos, South Newfane. I think the select board exhibits extreme due diligence in reviewing this. You can see anytime that they post a meeting that they're begging people to come and discuss it at that time. So what they've arrived at for a conclusion of, for social services, I think that I have no problem with it, that they are watching... no problem with it, that they are watching out for my tax dollars, because they always come in with a budget that serves the community. Thank you.
Yes, in the back with a scarf.
I live in Newfane Village. I have a question about whether or not we would still be able to hear from organizations that are here representing themselves. I think that visibility is important. It's an opportunity sometimes for people to hear about these organizations and their requests for the first time, so I'm curious about if we decide to vote as a whole, is there still an opportunity for organizations to feel visible and represented?
Yes. There's nothing in the motion that suggests that that cannot happen, so yes. Yeah. And then there was a question, a hand up front. Okay. Any other discussion of the motion to discuss and vote on Articles 10 through 37 together? Are you ready to vote? Okay. So hearing none, no more discussion. We will move to vote on the article that states that the Assembly, all of you, will vote on Articles 10 through 37 together. So if you think that's a good idea, you will say aye. If you don't think that's a good idea, you will say nay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We will discuss Articles 10 through 37 together. Is there any discussion of any of those articles?
Hi, Diane Eglon, Newfane. I'm here representing the Wyndham County Humane Society. We provide services to low-income Vermonters to help care for their animals. We provide a lot of services for the people of Newfane. In particular, in the past year, we've provided a great number of trap neuter and release services for feral cats in the area. We do this at no cost to the people who bring us the feral cats, and we do this for the good of the community. It costs a great deal of money to spay and neuter feral cats to prevent the explosion of cat colonies throughout the area. And we have in the budget here a request for $720. I would like to request $1,000 to help the Humane Society continue on with its mission to provide low-cost spay and neuter services and vaccination services to low-income Vermonters.
So Diane, are you making a formal motion to amend?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Could you please tell us on what page?
It is Article 31 on Page 8, please.
Article 31 is the Williams School Preservation Society.
No.
No. Article 31.
Page 8.
Page 8.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, okay.
In the past, Newfane has given the Humane Society $900. I don't understand why the amount requested was reduced when we have such an unending need, so.
Can I make a point of information?
Yeah.
That just to be clear, that's not the amount the Select Board put.
I understand, yes.
That was the amount that you, that the organization came to the Select Board and requested.
Well, I'm now coming and requesting more.
Okay. Is there a second to Diane's motion? So you are amending the motion to, that we just passed, looking at Articles 10 through 37 together, to increase the allocation under Article 31 from $720 to the Wyndham County Humane Society to $1,000. And there has been a second. Carol, did you register the second? Okay. Is there any discussion about increasing the amount to the Humane Society from 720 to 1,000? Yes, Ken?
Yeah, I think this is more a point...
State your name, please.
Yes, Ken, SD, Newfane. This might be more of a point of order, and just a question. If we put all of them together, all the articles together as we just voted to do, is it then possible to go into one of them or any of them? And that's...
Yes, because there, and anyone can correct me if you think I'm wrong, but because there was nothing in Neil's motion stating that that could not happen, it can happen.
Well, I'm delighted, of course, because that was, you know, partly the intent of, you know, not combining all of them. So if that's the case, that's great, and I would, you know, definitely, absolutely support the request for $1,000. Absolutely. Everything Diane says is correct about the needs, and more so.
Are there any other points of discussion about increasing the allocation of the Humane Society from 720 to $1,000? Yes, Lindsay.
Hi, Lindsay Bertram. Sorry, I'm dropping things. I just would like to say that the Humane Society had put their budget together already, decided what they needed, came to us and asked what they needed, and I don't see the need to add more than what they budgeted for.
Cindy Wilmont, Newfane. As an animal behavior expert, I know, I work closely with Wyndham County Humane Society, and the uptick, they need the money. So they've asked for 720. Someone's asking more. $1,000, I wholly agree.
Yes. Thank you, Tom.
James Arslan, question. Does the Humane Society service other communities in the area, and is the Humane Society going to go to them and ask for the additional money?
The Humane Society does not turn anybody away based on their zip code. However, the discounts that we offer to people based on their income are only given to people within Wyndham County.
So this country, county what?
Is there any further discussion?
Brenda Siegel, Newfane. And I just wanted to say, I do support this motion, and I support it. I personally have benefited from the support of the Wyndham County Humane Society when my dog was struggling and I did not have resources.
Excuse me, Brenda, could you please address the moderator?
Sure. Yeah. I personally have supported, have benefited from these services when my resources were low and I had a dog who needed support. And I know that there's other people in this community that have, and maybe don't want to say that, and so I want to make sure that we do represent that here. And also, I know that we have, I am the Executive Director of End Homelessness Vermont. We have clients, including in this district, who are, in this town, who are homeless and who are benefiting from this service, and are, and their dogs and cats do need support, and so I would urge us to approve this amendment.
Is there any other discuss, oh, yes, Chris.
Hi, Chris Trebert from South Newfane. I don't think anyone here, or I would say, speaking for myself, I totally support the work of the Wyndham Humane Society, and I'm sure most of us do and know how much they do and how much it costs to do. However, I think the point of this vote for us as a town, how much we are supporting them in what they requested, and I'm sure that Wyndham Humane Society went to all the towns and asked for a certain amount of money in their budget. So I feel like in the spirit of what we're doing, we respect that by saying yes to what they asked us. I think we could probably, on every single article and every single request, we could say, they could use more. I'd like to give more. I think for today's vote, I personally feel that we should vote on what was requested and leave it at that, and trust that they know what they're doing.
Is there any? Emmett.
Hi, Emmett Madavi, Williamsville. I guess I would just like to point out that somebody who works at the Humane Society just spoke, and so she does know what she was talking about in response to the previous comment. Okay. I guess just saying that somebody from the Humane Society was the one who asked for an increase of funds, so it is essentially, I mean, seems like pretty close to the entity to ask for the money that's asking for a change. It's not just like somebody random asking for more.
Okay. Is there a second? Patty Johnson? Okay, there is no debate. I'm calling the question, which means the discussion ends, but to call the question, two-thirds vote is needed. So we're not, you're not voting on the amendment, you're voting on whether to end discussion of the amendment. Everyone clear on that? Okay. Those in favor of ending discussion on the amendment to increase the Wyndham Humane Society's allocation from $720 to $1,000, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The allocation to the Wyndham County Humane Society remains at $720. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, calling the question. Okay. Be patient. Okay. What?
Making sure they're paying attention.
Yeah, exact, thank you. That's exactly what I was doing. Thank you. Okay, we are ending discussion, and now we are, is there any, so now we're voting on the motion to...
In the amendment.
The amended, the amend, right, the amendment to the motion to increase the allocation from the town to the Wyndham County Humane Society from $720 to $1,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. A division of the House has been called, which, bear with me, does not need a second, and I have been instructed by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns that this should take place with people standing.
Do we need the JPs up here?
You do have to count. Yeah, yeah. So those in favor of increasing the allocation to the Humane Society from $720 to $1,000, please stand. And remains, if you can't stand, raise your hand, and you will be counted, and please stay standing or your hand up until everybody is counted.
What about those going back? What about the ones who are standing already?
Oh, yes. If you're standing and back, but you don't want it, could everyone, could everyone please be quiet? If you're standing and back because you chose not to sit, yeah, or you don't, or don't have a seat, well, there are seats. Raise your hand. So if you're standing and back and you support an increase in the allocation to the Wyndham County Humane Society, please raise your hand so that the justices of the peace can Please, please, please stay in where you are seated. If you move around the room, it's hard for the JPs to count.
So all along the back, in this section, we have 60.
60?
Six of them.
Okay.
Steve, did you hear that the people standing, they have to raise their hands?
Switch what?
Half.
Okay. Could all those who voted, who were standing and voted in favor of this amendment, please sit? Thank you for your patience. And for those who are opposed to this amendment, could you please stand, and you will be
Fiona, when you guys have consulted, maybe this happens by...
Yes.
Are these totals, Gloria?
I'm going to put this, 116 total votes.
Nay.
No.
No.
That's, you said total. I want nay, nay 28. Nay 28.
Yep.
Yay 88.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Everybody may be seated. Thank you to the justices of the peace for doing that efficiently, and thank you, everybody, for your patience. If someone could, this mic is a constant challenge. Okay. I might tap you in a minute because it keeps tipping over. There were 88 ayes, 28 nays, so the motion passes. The Wyndham County Humane Society's allocation for fiscal year 2026 increased, will increase from $720 to $1,000. Okay. Is there further discussion of any of the Articles 10 through 37?
Hi, Erica Walts, Newfane. Erica Walts, Town of Newfane.
My, my comment is about the SEVeds, Article 24, sorry. They consistently ask for the most money from the Town of Newfane. They are asking for more than Grace Cottage is getting, more than anyone else is getting, all of these other organizations that do great work. And I took the opportunity to take a look at the SEVeds and BDCC budget, Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, which is the parent organization of SEVeds. And I'm just going to turn to that page where I took some notes. Their article is on page, their article is number 24. Bear with me. So the BDCC, the parent organization, on their, their annual report, which I found on the internet, had $5.7 million of revenue in fiscal year 2024, $4.86 million of expenses, and a profit of $267,126 in fiscal year 2024. SEVeds has a much smaller budget, the budget that they reported in the town report. And they received $50,000 from the BDCC and $126,000 in other funding, which is the money that they get from towns such as ours and the other towns that they ask for money from. They had a $23,609 profit in 2024, which they have also reported here to us in the town. And I would suggest that we don't fund them and that they get that, the money that they want from the towns from their funding organization, the BDCC, which is very well financed. It's, it's difficult to see what the benefit to our town is from this organization.
So Erica, are you making a motion to amend the original motion to remove Article 24 completely?
I suppose. I don't know, like, the ins and outs.
But that's your intent?
Yeah, I would like us not to fund them.
Okay, is there a second to Erica's amendment? Yes, the gentleman in the back with your
Lance Lambert.
Lance, okay. Sorry, Lance, I didn't recognize you. Okay, so there's a second. So now we are debating or discussing the proposed, the amendment, the proposal to eliminate any funding at all for SEVeds from this article. Is there anyone representing SEVeds who would like to speak? Jen, could you please stand up? If there are no objections, Jen Stromston would like to address the Assembly.
Am I addressing the moderator?
Yes, thank you, Jen.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for asking questions. When we didn't ask towns
Excuse me, what is your position and relationship?
Oh, my position is Director of Programs. I don't work in every single program. I know the community programs and the workforce programs in the most detail. I don't work in the business programs, so I know them less well.
And I'm not sure everyone knows what the acronym stands for.
Yeah. BDCC is the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation. It is one of the 12 state regional development corporations that receive about $120,000 a year from the state of Vermont to do economic development. So most RDCs consist of a person or a person and a half. That was conceived to be not sufficient by this region, by a number of grassroots organization of people, including some folks from this town, a little over 10 years ago. And thus, SEVeds was formed. They basically said real estate
What does that stand for?
And SEVeds is the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies Group. The, the basic concept was BDCC, which has been around for exactly 70 years, doing as an industrial corporation and then as the state's entity, the regional development corporation, doing business retention, real estate. We own the cotton mill. We own the business park. Was not sufficient. And that it really wasn't enough. It wasn't helping towns directly enough. It wasn't doing enough around workforce, that we had sort of a people problem. We didn't have enough people staying. We didn't have enough training, workforce training. And so the idea of SEVeds was that we had to figure out a way to do more as a rural region. You know, we don't have county government. We don't have a lot of county entities. And again, that allocation from the state just is what it is. And it's enough to sort of have a person who tries to make sure that, you know, the big hospital doesn't close down or that the big employer doesn't keep downsizing. So SEVeds was formed, whatever, you know, 14, 15 years ago. And it really is the basis for starting to act and think strategically. And at the beginning, we got some seed funding from the city, the town of Brattleboro that basically said, yeah, you, we'll help you out because so much of your businesses are here. But we're going to want you to go to talk to other towns and hear them out and get funding from them and be responsive to that. So I will fast forward and say, that $50,000 of seed funding that we get from BDCC, it's, it's basically, yes, it's from revenue. It's from rent revenue. Our goal is not really to do all of our programs off of the backs of small businesses. We have 85 business tenants and nonprofits. Food Connects, the Food Bank. NECA still has space in the cotton mill. We have a lot of different organizations. And most of our revenue is rent revenue. And so it's kind of a robbing Peter to pay Paul. A lot of it's on our books when we hold over money. It's not profit because we're a nonprofit. It's money that's held over for big projects. So we just did a big roof project. We were psyched that it cost about $2 million and not $5. That was amazing. But that's how we keep things from happening like the great disaster of the leaky roof onto all of Green Mountain diapers of several years ago. So that's, that's kind of the, the relationship between the two organizations is, it's great. We frankly couldn't do SEVeds stuff without BDCC. We go for federal grants. We take that local town funding and we leverage it. So like, if we want the USDA to help us fund the RCDI program that we have that's called SEP, another terrible acronym, I'm sorry, we have to bring a dollar for every dollar. So when we do a grant writing training for towns or the get-on-board training to help new people get into wanting to be select board members, that's available to everybody. It's either free or we offer a lot of scholarships. That kind of programming requires us to walk to the USDA with a dollar for every single thing. We're really committed to bringing money from outside the region. And that's a thing that we also can do. What we don't really do is fundraising. We don't ask individuals for money. We try not to compete with Grace Cottage or the Humane Society. Because of BDCC, we have the capacity to apply for those kinds of big funds and frankly, bring new money into the region because we can do things like survive a single audit that federal dollars require. So I'm going to give you a few examples, then not take more of your time. I'm really happy to answer more questions, but I know this is a big day. We had a Newfane newcomers event, which is the grow event here recently. We have a full-time person who is in every single school, including Leland and Gray and the Brattleboro schools. And we do things that you've probably heard about from the kids that you know, like the Reality Fair and Senior Survival. That's a program that's called P3, Pipelines and Pathways, that was really there to help increase kids' access to career planning. So they graduate with a plan, regardless of whether they're going to college or going right into work. And through a mashup of kind of that program and our workforce program, we are going to be doing a CDL cohort. And we do, we are the service provider for refugee employment. We helped start refugee settlement in this region because part of our strategic plan said, we need people. Immigration is important. And so we actually wrote the application for ECDC to set up an office in Brattleboro. So that's the kind of stuff that we do. Some of the partners I work with are here. They're Newfane residents. They work with refugees or they're a small business that's working on a succession plan. But we don't name our clients, honestly. So happy to talk about it some more. But, you know, we, we do a lot and it's complicated. And, you know, for the programmatic side, which is what I work on, I, I can't dip into the real estate side. It just, we really have a pretty straightforward and kind of strict division about how that works. And there are, you know, it's really important that we're here. And not every single town funds us every year. And sometimes it's on and sometimes it's off. But I really appreciate the time. And we do come to the select board. And we spend a decent amount of time, but probably never enough. We're available to you to answer questions.
Could I just suggest that you explain how you come up with the amount that you ask each town?
Thanks, so yeah. It's on my list, but I was trying not to read off of my things. So we ask every single town for $3 a person. So it's just proportional. And, and we've kept that, the same number. Because, you know, again, we have been trying to build our capacity to get money from somewhere else, not you. So that buy-in is really important. That investment's really important. Those frankly flexible dollars are really important. Grants are tricky. But it's $3 a person for every town.
Thank you, Jen. Marshall? Marshall, could you please come up to the mic? Thank you.
Marshall Glickman, South Newfane. I still don't have a lot, total clarity on what they're doing. Seems fine. But I just wanted to give a little context that I was a Oh, see? Because I'm not young. A little context. I was a tenant at BDCC for many years. And they were really helpful for getting our business off the ground. But over the years, they turned into much more of a, just a classic landlord organization. They really felt non-profit-y at first. And then they are kind of run by a lot of real estate people on the board. And they just got kind of really hardball-y. I don't know if that has anything to do with this organization. But I went from having really fond feelings to them to like, not so crazy. I'm just offering that as a little context.
Annie?
Okay, Annie Lannenberger. I just want to point out, Jen was talking about the refugee connection with BCDC, BDCC and ECDC, which is the Ethiopian community. Okay. So just remember that all these people who are trying to help build our workforce and resettle our refugees are being cut severely. The impact of federal cuts on what's happening right here now, 12 miles from here, is significant. Our refugee families are hurting. And we need them.
Lindsay?
I just would like a little clarification. I keep hearing BDCC, which I understand is the parent organization, but it's not who this funding is going to, right? And, and so I guess I'm confused as to where the separation is and whether the BDCC funding is still going to exist and how much of these things that we're talking about are actually being funded by BDCC versus whatever this other acronym is. I'm sorry, I can't remember. SEVeds, yeah. So I, I guess I'm not super clear on what the full distinction is from SEVeds versus BDCC. Can anybody clarify?
If there are no objections, Jen, could you address that question?
Okay, yeah, this is, it's, it's just hard. So money flows a little bit, about $50,000 a year from BDCC to SEVeds, but not in the other direction. And it's really just SEVeds programming. SEVeds is a 501(c)(3). It's an awkward construct. I'll just say that. Because when we go for grants, they have different opinions about who should receive the money. So sometimes they want a 501(c)(3) to receive the money. So some grants flow right to SEVeds, but then BDCC employs the people, right? So BDCC sort of holds the pocketbook for the SEVeds programming. But to think about it in the most kind of conceptually clear, there's sort of the real estate and development side. And then there's the program side. So anything we do that's programmatic, anything we do with high schoolers, anything we do with small business support and assistance and succession planning and startups, anything we do that's workforce training, anything we do that's community programs or the summit or, you know, webinars, that is all programmatic. And so that is really what we, what we refer to as SEVeds-led programming, even though sometimes the money has to flow directly to BDCC because that agency or that program wants to work with the bigger entity and not the 501(c)(3), whatever. So that's the distinction. On a day-to-day basis, it's like a really, there's staff that work on real estate and that manage those properties, and I'm sorry. But then there's staff that go into the high schools that, that work, you know, Amir works every day with refugee employment. Jack Spanierman works every day on workforce training. So there's like a very, very different set of people and programs.
Ken?
Moderator. Ken SD, Newfane, Vermont. The amount we're talking about, according to my calculations on this here piece of paper, is .0003%. So the amount is extremely small. But for SEVeds and the people served by that program, very big. Not to mention that for us to cut our funding in the way that it's been proposed would set a negative example for other towns. So I think Newfane, you know, we're leaders and we should act like those leaders and, you know, set an example for the rest of the SEVeds community. Not to mention, a good look at page 111 of the annual report will show the work that SEVeds has been doing. And I might also add, as the former Planning Commission member and head of the Planning Commission, that the Southern Vermont Economic Summit that's held annually is very important and gives us a lot of good insight on the Planning Commission. And so, yeah, I would just say, you know, let's look forward, let's look up, and let's, you know, support this important organization.
Yes, with your hand up. Thank you, everybody, for using the mic. It makes a difference, especially for folks in back.
My name is Grant Johnson. I live just outside Newfane Village. I just wanted to speak also in support of SEVeds and BDCC. My wife and I registered a business with the state of Vermont about two years ago. BDCC and SEVeds was pretty crucial in providing us with guidance and support in that process. We are one of, I think if I'm reading it correctly, one of the eight businesses who was employed through the technical assistance grant that SEVeds administered. So that money has helped to support our livelihoods and in turn has been reinvested into the Town of Newfane. So I agree with the person who just spoke previously that we should be leaders in this and show support for BDCC because economic development is vital to our town and letting it grow and allowing, especially young people who are just starting off, starting businesses, starting families, to move here and find employment and provide a tax base for the town. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Gerald?
Gerald Julian Soussay. I live in South Newfane. I work for Vermont Adult Learning, but I work very closely with BDCC, the ECDC, the Ethiopian Development Council. And I coordinate the English Language Program for the refugee resettlement. And I can tell you, it is so essential for the vitality of our communities, all of us, that this be supported because of the education, the training programs, the support that these folks get. And it's not just the refugees. It's general economic development. But because this is my work, I know how critical it is to get the support. We've worked, and BDCC has sponsored early child, you know, early childhood development courses, CDL commercial truck driving courses, weatherization and heat pump installation, healthcare initiatives. Many people are now working in our healthcare locations, the hospital, doctor's offices and so forth. And it really is because there is tremendous support from BDCC and SEVeds to help bring these people into our community. They're here. They're a part of our community. And they want to be productive, tax-paying members. So I urge everyone to support. And when I heard that it came down to $3 per person in each town, that's a worthwhile investment. So thank you.
Is there any other discussion of the motion to remove funding for SEVeds from the article, the, the new article, articles 10, new motion, articles 10 through 37? Any further discussion? Annie Lindaburger is calling the question. Second, raise your hand, please. The second, there's no discussion. So you're voting now on whether to end discussion of whether to remove funding for SEVeds from the budget for fiscal year 2026? Everyone clear on what you're voting on? Okay. All those in favor of ending discussion on this topic, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Discussion of whether to remove Article 24 from this larger article is, does not, it fails? Well, discussion, thank you, I'm sorry, I need food is the issue. So we are ending discussion, and now we're reverting back to the conversation about, oh no, now we're voting on whether to remove Article 24 from the larger motion on the table.
Collect it.
Yes, collect, yes, exactly. There's no Robert's Rules of Order word for that. So if you support removing funding for Seveds from the budget, if you support removing, that was the amendment, then you will vote aye. If you would like money for Seveds to stay in the budget as specified in Article 24, you will vote nay. All those in favor of removing Article 24, all funding for Seveds, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. The amendment is defeated. Okay, so now, we go back to discussing any of the articles between 10 and 37 that are of interest to you, except for 24, which we just talked about, and except for 31, which you just voted on. So any other comments or questions about any of the other articles between 10 and 37? Gloria?
I'm here representing Senior Solutions, even though I'm technically not on the board, but I continue to provide the, I continue to provide the support from New Fane for the Senior Solutions, and I'm definitely concerned about what's happening in our administration. If you would turn to page...
Gloria, could you specify the article that you're addressing?
Article 13. And the page number for Senior Solutions discussion is on page 100. And the, a very key part of Senior Solutions is the Meals on Wheels, and we provided 2,900 meals to people. And with the cutting of funding, there's potential, I've heard kind of a drifting of potential for that being, some of that funding being cut. And Senior Solutions provides much, much more than just meals, although that's very significant. We've provided 157 hours of caregiver support, grant assistance, and case management support to 11 residents of New Fane. And our volunteers provide two residents with a total of 127 hours of volunteer visitation, assistance with errands and/or phone calls. We also have a helpline that people can call for Senior Solutions, and that includes mental health suggestions. So with, to me, this is kind of a no-brainer, but on the other hand, if people think that seniors, of whom many, many of us in New Fane are seniors, shouldn't deserve this support, then that would make me very, very sad. So please do support Senior Solutions and just keep your eyes and ears open for what is potentially coming down the pipeline, or is it going to be held back from coming down the pipeline to support us?
Any other discussion about any of the other articles? Yes? Could you please use the mic? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Beckley Godette, New Fane, I'm the librarian at the Morphy Library, and I just want to thank you all for considering appropriating some money towards the library each year and to just introduce myself, so come visit us anytime.
Beckley is referencing Article 23, Morphy Library, an allocation of $2,700, just for clarification. Okay, who, who, Fiona, and we need a second to call the, Sean, Shannon? So there's no debate on this, no discussion? All those in favor of ending discussion on any other articles between 10 and 37, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to ending discussion on Articles 10 through 37, please say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Discussion on any of the other articles now comes to a close. And now we are voting on an amended version of Neil's amendment, Neil's motion. So the, if you support the, all the articles as they are written, except for the, the only change that has been approved is the increased allocation to the Humane Society for $1,000. That's part of this now new motion. So if you support that change and all the other allocations between Articles 10 through 37, please say aye.
Aye.
Deb, are you asking for what the total allocation, including this increase to the Humane Society, would be if this motion passes?
It should be, whether it passes or fails, it should be the amount of all the money that we are allocating.
Okay, and, thank you, Deb. Melissa, what is the total amount that all these Articles 10 through 37 come to, including the increase in the allocation to the Humane Society?
The increase, from what I understand, is $280, right?
Correct.
So total now is $41,520.
Forty-one thousand... Okay, so shall the voters of New Fane approve Articles 10 through 37, including the $200, $280 increase to the Humane Society, for a total allocation of $41,520? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes appears to, appear to have it. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Okay, now we turn to Article 38. I consulted with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns prior to today to get an attorney's input on what is germane and what is not germane to this article. In my opinion, and in the attorney's opinion, there are two points that are not germane to this motion, and therefore she and I do not think are appropriate for discussion today. The first is the process that the select board used to decide whether this article is or is not in the warning. That is, in my opinion and the attorney's opinion, not germane to this article. The second point that she and I do not feel is germane is whether it is appropriate or not to have these kinds of warnings on, these kind of articles on our town warning. So it's not taking a position, just saying that from both of our points of view, that the discussion is about what is written here, not about how this got on the warning, and not about whether it's appropriate to discuss it or not. Now, I can be overridden. I, I serve the Assembly, but that is my opinion and Vermont League of Cities and Towns attorney's opinion as well. So with that background, what is the pleasure of the body on Article 38?
Mary Moriarty moves for consideration of the article.
Okay, Mary Moriarty moves for consideration of Article 38. Is there a second?
Second.
Five hands went up, I heard a voice, whose voice... Okay. Is there, one other reminder, is that Robert's Rules of Order calls for going back and forth between different perspectives on an article. So if someone has spoken in favor of this article, I will specifically ask if there's somebody who is not in favor of the article. And we'll go back and forth that way in order to try to keep the discussion balanced in terms of perspectives. So I think that there is discussion on this article. Yes, yes.
Tom Concanon, South New Fane. Just want a clarification on the attorneys, on the attorneys and your recommendation on whether this is appropriate for this, whether the article is appropriate. People can speak to that as a reason for opposing the motion, or they can't speak to it, is the recommendation?
The recommendation is that that not be part of the discussion today. That we just focus on the, what?
Substance?
On this, yeah, the substance of Article 38. Yes, Erica?
You said you could be overridden on that?
Yes. Yes, with a motion, and I'm just trying to, Deb, if you know the answer to the question as to which motion this is. Appeal the moderator's decision. It needs a second. So Erica, are you making a motion?
Yeah, I moved that we override the moderator's decision, that the relativity of this being part of the Fane Town Meeting not be discussed when we're talking for or against it.
Not be discussed?
You said, I'm just saying that we over, you said we can't discuss whether this is an appropriate article for discussion at town meeting, and so I'm asking that we override your decision about that.
Okay, I'm not saying that you can't, I'm saying that my recommendation as moderator is that it is not germane, but that, I'm not telling you you can't do anything, it's you all who decide what you can and can't do, just to clarify. Yes, Erica, some people did not hear your point, so please begin, repeat your point.
Thank you, Erica Walsh, New Fane. I, I'm just trying to say, I don't know how to go about it in Robert's Rules of Order, that I feel that the discussion of whether or not this is an appropriate item for the voters of New Fane to even address at town meeting is worthy of discussion when you're speaking for or against the article.
Okay, so Erica, I hear you. We, it, it, in order for, that my recommendation to be overridden, it does need to be voted on. So you're amending the current, there's already a motion on the table. Article 38 has already been moved and seconded. Yes.
You didn't actually say nobody could talk about it, it was merely a recommendation. Why do we need to vote on it? You made a recommendation from yourself and from the lawyer, but it didn't forbid anybody from saying anything. It's merely a recommendation.
That, that is true. As I said, it's not a decision. Okay. Point well taken. Okay. Thank you, you are correct. Yes. Yes, Deb Luskin, my predecessor, pointed out that I neglected to actually read Article 38. I referenced it, but not, did not read it. She is correct, and I need to actually read the article, and then it can be moved and seconded. Article 38, shall the voters of the town of New Fane adopt the following pledge and instruct the town clerk to convey this message to the select board, state legislature, governor, lieutenant governor, and U.S. congressional delegation? We affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for the Palestinian people and all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, and oppression. And we declare ourselves to be an apartheid-free community, and to that end, we pledge to join others in working to end all support of Israel's apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression. Is there, would someone like to move that motion? That's true. Okay, you're, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right. Okay, they're already, yep, yep. Yes, Deb, I did it a little out of order, as you were pointing out, but I did reference Article 38, and it was moved and seconded. Okay. Are there other discussion points having to do with Article 38? Walter?
Walter Phelps, Williamsville. I wanted to offer not an amended, an amendment, but an observation. As written, the article instructs the town clerk to do something. I do not believe that the owners can instruct or direct an elected official to do anything. So if someone wanted to offer an amendment to change that from instruct to request, that might be a good idea.
Neil?
Neil Pelsoon, Fane Hill. You now have, Madam Moderator, you have two motions simultaneously on the floor. So if you want to act on the second motion, which has been duly seconded, if you could request the original, the originator of the first motion to withdraw it, then you can act on this one.
But, Bucky, what's his other motion?
I don't, I don't know this lady's name, but she made a motion for consideration, and it was seconded.
Right, and she made it before I actually read the article, and then she made it again after I read the article, so it's the same motion, it's the same action on the same article.
Just one motion.
It's just one motion. Yes?
Can you clarify what we're discussing right now? Are we discussing Article 38 or...
Are we discussing Article 38 or Erica's amendment to Article 38?
There was no amendment. She, she didn't make a formal amendment and there's agreement that my recommendation as to what is germane and not, or not, and what the attorney at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns recommendation is or is not, is, is for your consideration, but it's not, it's not something I am trying to impose on you all. Um, yes?
Um, so it seems like a question here, um, I'm sorry, the gentleman in the gray, I don't remember your name, I'm so sorry, um, was saying that we couldn't vote to compel um, an elected official to do something, but didn't we just do that earlier today when we compelled the select board to set up a committee to look into the constable? So I believe if we've already done that today, then we could compel an elected official to do something.
Can that be said on microphone?
Yes, not ev- not everyone was able, I really asked that everybody use a microphone. If you're in the front, you can't hear in the back. If you're in the back, you can't hear in the front. And you need to state your, also, are you a, a Newfane resident?
Yes, I am.
Okay, could you please state your name?
Yes, my name is Sarah Niasse. I'm a Newfane resident. Um, so the question was whether or not we could compel an effective, uh, an elected official to do something. Um, but we did that already today earlier when we compelled the select board to set up a committee to look into the constable. So that's kind of the point of town meeting. So, uh, the question as to whether or not we can actually do that, the answer in my view and the answer that we actually have enacted that today is yes, we can.
Bruce.
Hi, I'm Bruce Rosso. I live in, uh, Williamsville, which I've learned is part of Newfane. We are coming back around to this issue, um, a year after we brought it up and it has been, uh, uh, misery on the whole world and, um, things have only gotten worse. When we debated this last year, we arrived at language that I want to propose as an amendment to this Amendment 38. And, um, get some copies so you don't have to scribble it.
Thank you.
Again, this is the language that we approved last year at this meeting over this very issue. It's streamlined a little bit. I propose that we amend Article 38 to say the following. We, the voters of Newfane, continue to be moved by the suffering caused by the deep history of violence and oppression in the Middle East. We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of all of our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace.
Is there a second to Bruce's motion?
Second.
Uh, Cindy?
Cindy Willock.
Okay, so now we are discussing the amendment that Bruce just offered and was seconded. Dan.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Dan DeWolff from South Newfane. Bruce, I would like to commend Bruce on a beautiful amendment and I believe, I agree with every word that's in it. I would suggest that we adopt that amendment as, as, uh, an addition to this or as another article because what we're discussing here today is a different topic. And what we're discussing in Article 38 is actually a system of two sets of laws, a system which has been legally recognized by the International World Court, uh, countries all over the world as an apartheid system. And the reason that we feel that we should be considering this question today is that this is a system which is very much financed and supported by the United States government with our tax dollars. So in, and if, um, if people are movie fans, um, there was a documentary that just won an Academy Award on Sunday and it was directed, it's about, about this very issue and it was directed by an Israeli and a Palestinian. And the Israeli said, in my country, I have freedom of movement. In my country, I have freedom of speech. I have a different set of laws that govern me. And my brother, the Palestinian, who's also a director in this movie, lives by an entirely different set of laws. And so we are specifically talking about the concept of apartheid. And when, when apartheid existed in South Africa, we were pretty united in saying this is a bad thing, we do not support it. And when our government supported it, we spoke out against it. And I would also like to say that none of this, you know, persecution against Jewish people goes way past even before the Holocaust. The Jewish people have suffered forever, for their entire history. They have been unfairly pointed out, uh, discriminated against, violated, killed, and there's no question about that. And the Holocaust was a terrible culmination of that. And their determination to have a safe place to live is absolutely understandable and makes sense and this should be supported. However, for that to exist and happen cannot be done on the backs of yet another people who are now being persecuted, killed, genocide, ethnic cleansing. And these are things which are happening today with the support of our government. And so that is why this resolution was brought to our attention in the town is we are responsible, we are in part responsible and we are complicit for what is happening right now to the Palestinians and Israel. This is not saying anything about, um, Israel's validity to exist. It is not saying anything about the Jewish people as being bad or anything like that. We are talking about government policies of the Netanyahu government and of the Biden administration and now the Trump administration, um, hand in glove one after the other. So this is very specific to that and I, and I regret deeply and I understand the pain that my Jewish friends feel, some of my Jewish friends feel about this amendment. I also know that this, this, uh, article is being supported and brought up and advocated for by many Jewish people all across our state and across the nation and across the world as well. And I really believe that the policies of the Netanyahu government and the policies of our government have done more damage and put more Jewish people in danger because we are not paying attention to it. And I believe that by calling and saying we are not okay with this, we support Jewish people, but we cannot support genocide and ethnic cleansing, no matter what has been suffered in the past. And these are, these are separate issues and one does not take away from the other. So I, I reiterate, I would like to repeat my support and love and, and appreciation for Jewish people and their plight and how they have suffered in the world, but at the same time, I would like us to recognize that there is a system of oppression that is official, that is documented, that has led to a terrible conflict, that has led to violence on both sides because of this system. And as a result, you know, if, if apartheid system was not in Israel, we don't know if October 7th would have happened or not. This, this system is putting Jewish people in danger and, and there is a list of prominent Israeli officials and, and politicians and thinkers who agree over the years and have said these occupations, this unequal treatment only makes us less safe. So this amendment is not about making people less safe in Israel. This amendment is about recognizing that what is happening there is illegal, immoral, makes them more in danger, and we do not support our government in making it happen.
Is there somebody who would like to speak to Bruce's amendment who has a different point of view from that which was just?
Point of order.
Yes.
I think you said amendment, it didn't mean amendment, you meant the original article, right?
We, the, the, we are currently discussing the amendment that Bruce offered and was seconded, which is the one that he read. So that's what's up for discussion right now.
I seconded and I want to remove my second with the suggestion that Bruce's be added as a separate article because I think they're two different things.
Okay. Yeah, if an article has not been warned, it cannot, in the town, it can, it cannot be voted on today. Yes? Yes. Co- correct, yes. So Cindy, I just want to clarify, Cindy asked about voting on this amendment that Bruce offered as a separate article. And I explained that because it was not formally warned, it doesn't show up in our list of articles, it cannot be voted on today. And then Dan pointed out that the, that there could be an amendment to Bruce's amendment that would add Bruce's amendment to the original Article 38. Now, I know that's very confusing. Did anyone not follow that and I can try to say it in a different way?
Point of order.
Yes.
Does Bruce have to agree to this amendment to the amendment?
Right.
No.
Well, then we would have to vote on the amendment first.
Correct.
Before we would amend the amendment. Correct?
Correct. No.
It, like, if it's a friendly amendment, we would have to ask Bruce if it was a friendly amendment and then we could go forward. If it is not a friendly amendment, I believe we have to vote on the amendment and then we would, and then someone else would say I would like to make it.
Yes, you, thank, thank you Fiona, you are correct. There's also an option, um, it's called a substitute amendment that would replace existing language with other language, but I don't believe that that is the will of the body. Are these all, everyone, three people of your hands up, are these all points of order? Yes, Lynn?
This is entirely dumb, but we voted on this last year. Should we just vote on the, the, the article this year? We are on record for voting for this last year is what I'm saying.
Right.
Bruce, yes, we voted on this last year and it passed. So it's actually redundant to vote on it again, not that it's, it makes it less important, but let, couldn't we just focus on Article 38 today?
Um, well, an amendment has been seconded, has been made and seconded that suggests replacing Article 38, but then that would apply too because this... Yeah, i- if it replaces the article, then that wouldn't be permitted. If it's added on to the article, then that would be permitted.
But is it necessary, is what I was asking?
Yeah, well, that, that's a, that's a, yeah. Um, Deb?
I'd like to speak to the amendment. Any, uh, microphone?
Point of order.
Yes, Mary.
May we have clarification on whether Bruce's amendment is a true amendment or whether he's authorized to replace the original Article 38?
Yes, that is an excellent question. Where's Bruce? Bruce, are you suggesting that this replace the current article or that it be added to Article 38?
Respectfully, um, I would like for this to replace the language in the amendment. It's, we're still talking about Article 38. I am amending that article with replacement language. Um, I'd also like to say, so I do not want the original language. I have to be very clear about this. I would like to replace the original language in the article with the language I proposed. I want to say that I, uh, love what Dan said. I agree completely with him. My reason for wanting to replace the language is that I see that there is evil on both sides. One side's being called out, the other not. And that's why I wanted to put forth language that is inclusive of everybody. And justice is the recognition of the suffering of the other. And that's what we are saying as a community that is not happening, that we are saying as one, needs to happen, that each side needs to look up, see the world they are creating for their children and stop. And I think that my language expresses that most directly. Thank you.
So in Robert's Rules of Order, this is amending by substitution and I'm going to read the description. This amendment involves striking out an entire section or paragraph or a whole motion and inserting different language. An approved substitution means the original motion is entirely replaced with a new one. So that is what Bruce is suggesting, that what he read entirely replaced the, at, um, Article 38 as warned. So, um, that's what we are continuing to discuss. That was a clarification. Deb, you wanted to speak?
I'd like to speak to that.
Great.
Hi, Deborah Luskin. And it's a pleasure to be able to express an opinion that is not about Robert's Rules of Order. For the first time in 17 years. Um, I would like to say that I fully endorse Bruce's amendment.
Deb, I don't believe you were in the room and we all applauded and thanked you for your many years of services, Town Moderator. You're very welcome. Is this in opposition to Bruce's amendment?
Um, you know, Mary and Heather had, uh, first.
I'm sorry, Emmett has had his hand up for about 10. Is it all right? Okay.
Hi, everyone. I was at the meeting last year and I actually was the person who stood up and said, I object when Deborah was reading the...
Could you please address the moderator?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was at the, uh, town meeting last year when Deborah was reading the proposed article to the people sitting here last year and I stood up and I said, I object to the conversation. My objection was overruled and, uh, at that time Bruce had, uh, a different way of expressing an article and that was, uh, voted for. And I vote for what Bruce is saying now again. But I have another concern and if, um, you allow me to say it, I would like to say it now, that, um... People, people come to this meeting because it's about the town of Newfane. This is a town of Newfane annual meeting. And I had suggested last year that a meeting about what Dan wanted to speak about could be held at any other day of the year with all the people who wanted to discuss this, but that it affects the feeling of a Newfane town meeting. It affects how people want then choose whether they're going to come to this town meeting or not. And that's what's happened this year, but even in a worse spirit. And maybe this is not the time to talk about it in terms of what you said we have to vote on. what you said we have to vote on. But when I look out here, I am so proud to be living in Newfane. I love it here. I'm Jewish, my parents were Holocaust survivors, we, my grandmother was killed by the Nazis. But this is not how I live my life here. I live my life here, being very grateful every single day of the year, that I live in Newfane. My husband and I moved up here full-time in, uh, 2007, and there wasn't a day, without exaggeration, that we did not say to each other at the kitchen table how lucky we are to live in Vermont, and specifically in Newfane. My husband died on October 24th of last year. And I miss him terribly. But when people asked me, "Am I going to move away?" I said, "Absolutely not, never. I am so proud to be here, and I love it." But Dan, you were the one who called me in 2013, I received a phone call from you, saying that you're calling to ask if I'd be on select board. And I said, "Wait a minute, I think you're talking about Sidney. I don't do politics." And you said, "No, no, no." I'm shaking, of course. Uh, you said, "No, you're asking me." And then, years later, when I retired from select board, you called me, and you asked me if I would join your meetings of restorative justice. But I have been doing that in Brattleboro with, uh, court diversion for many years. And so, so I thanked you for inviting me, but I didn't, but I have to say, Dan... I have to say, Dan, that you are a brilliant musician. You're a brilliant writer. I, Sidney and I came to visit your, um, woodworking shop years ago, and we were in awe of the beautiful constructive woodwork and furnishings you do. And so I honor you for all of that. But I have to say that I really feel that the Vermont Town Meeting Day is for Vermont business, and that this year, after last year's conversation here, I know of many people who decided not to come to Town Meeting Day, because they did not want to get upset with each other at the end. And so that's all I want to say. I love everybody here, but I really wish that we could just focus on what we need to do, how we need to be together, because we are all living in a beautiful place. That's all.
I know some of you in the back have had your hands up. Emmett has also waited patiently and has a different perspective.
Um, hi, Emmett Madavi-Wilmsville. Um, just addressing one point that she just made, I see an incredibly full room for Town Meeting. Um, I, some people may not have come, but it seems like a lot of people did come, um, which, you know, getting people involved in local politics, this should be something that we celebrate. Um, I don't see this amendment as, well, A, I see it as redundant, um, B, I don't see it as related truly to the proposed initial article. Um, why don't I see it as related? Um, the article from last year, so this proposed amendment, um, is a call for a ceasefire and a recognition of harm on both sides. The article, as we see it on the warning, is a call for the Newfane voters to send a message that we do not support the Israeli system of apartheid, which is in place partially in Gaza, but full force in the West Bank, a different place entirely. Um, I, I just don't think that these, I don't know if this would be a point of order. I don't know if there's, like, a way to express that I don't think that this amendment replacing Article 38 should even be considered.
So you're stating a point of view, and if you disagree with the motion, which is a motion to substitute, then you will vote nay when the time comes.
Okay, so, yeah. Um, okay. I guess, well, whatever.
Um, Sarah Adrier. Taylor.
Hi, I'm Sarah Taylor, New, uh, South Newfane. Um, I wholeheartedly adopt Bruce's wording for, uh, amendment, and, um, but I also want to say that I don't think Town Meeting is the place for world politics, with our big orange blob as president that we have now. There is too much that we could be discussing, um, if, you know, like, I'm worried about Ukraine. So I just feel like, um, this is not a discussion for Town Meeting.
Um, Henriette.
Um, I, I...
Could you please state your name?
Oh, my name's Henriette Mantell, and I grew up in Newfane, Vermont. Um, so I don't know what part of this whole thing this comes in, but I'm just wondering, is this a precedent now that we have, that we are going to discuss international issues? Because a lot of us have a lot of them. And now I'm wondering, like, last year, this year, like, I agree with our former hope to be against select woman Marion, that, you know, if it's going to be a precedent, then everybody should come in with their articles about international issues, I guess, because I have a few myself. That's all I have to say.
It, it is up to, according to state law, it is up to the Select Board to determine which policy issues come before the Assembly at Town Meeting. That, that this is fully within the, um, authority of the Select Board. Knowing that, is there anyone on the Select Board who would like to address the point that was just made?
We were presented at a meeting, uh, two voter-backed petitions, and, and they were both denied. This one because we, we voted that it wasn't town business. Um, the second one was because it had, did not have the proper amount of signatures. When we did that, we were approached afterwards by, um, Mr. DeWalt, that he was not notified and did not know that it was going to be on our agenda, and asked if we would hold a special meeting so that he could present, and we did. And at that time, a revote was taken, and that's when it was voted to put back on the ballot, or the, as an article.
Um, was there a point of order? Yes, Dan?
Um, anyone can bring a petition to, to the Select Board to ask to have, uh, issue put on the warning. It takes 10% of the, of the town voters. That number right now is around, um, I think it's eighty-five, ninety-nine.
Dan, folks in front are having trouble hearing you.
Anyone can put a, issue on a, on a warning of, for Town Meeting, with 10% of the voters in the town signing a petition. This petition was signed by 99 voters, which was 10 or 15 more than necessary. So anyone can bring an issue, if they want, to Town Meeting by getting 10% of the voters to say, "Yes, we agree. This is something that should be discussed at Town Meeting."
Um, the gentleman in the back, sitting to Sarah, yes, with the mustache?
Yeah, I'm...
I'm, I'm sorry, CB. Uh, yes, sorry. You also have a mustache, and are sitting in back. I hope in two years I will know every single person's name.
Uh, my name is Dennis Wiswell. I live in, uh, Newfane. And I agree with the opinion of the moderator, and with the attorney from the, um, uh, VLCT, that this is an inappropriate article for Town Meeting. And although, excuse me, I...
Excuse me, could you all let Dennis finish his comments? Thank you. Oh, people can't hear you, Dennis.
Can't hear me? Really?
You have to, you have to hold the mic right up to your mouth.
Oh, I have it up too close. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Now, it's too far away.
Is my voice loud enough without...
No.
Try to get it to the right spot. Is that the right spot?
Yeah, that, you're getting thumbs up.
Okay, as I said, I agree. I, I feel that this is an inappropriate article. And I listened to Marion, and I know Marion quite well. And although I'm not Jewish, so I don't think I can quite feel the heartfelt pain that she feels over what has happened to the Jewish people over many centuries. As a compromise to this, in my opinion, poorly written and just bad article, I think it, although I don't agree with everything that was stated, I think the article, or the amendment that Bruce submitted, would be a much more appropriate. And I, my opinion is that is the article that we should vote on, not this.
Yes, yes, Mary.
Mary Moriarty-Wilmsville. I, I'm, I'm a little confused procedurally where we are now.
Yes, thank you for...
And I'm looking at the Robert's Rules.
Yes.
That you handed out.
Yep.
And if there's a motion to substitute a motion for the original motion, if the, the intended substitute motion is seconded, this says discussion will continue on both motions. Eventually, the body will vote on which motion they prefer. Because otherwise, the substitute motion, which in this case was a motion to amend by completely replacing the original motion, that would completely cut off any discussion of the original motion, just by somebody saying, "We want to substitute the language entirely."
Okay, um, it's great you asked, so that we're on, all on the same page procedurally. We are not, there are not two motions on the floor. There, there, right now, we're discussing an amendment that would, it's not a substitute amendment, it's substituting language, and there's a difference. So we're voting on whether or not to substitute the original wording of Article 38 with what Bruce has suggested. If, and then we'll vote on that. And if it's voted down, we go back to discussing the original article.
I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's correct.
Uh, Deb, would you like to add your two cents? Okay. Y- yes, the question can be called at any time. It does need a second, but there's not discussion. Okay, I heard Fiona's voice first, although I know there were many seconds.
I, point of order.
Yes?
You stated at the beginning of this need, of the beginning of this article being opened up, that you were going to try to go back and forth between pro and con about this entire discussion. And so far, we have only heard from the people wanting to make the substitution, with one exception. So it's about six, seven to one at this point. Those of us who oppose the amendment have not really had equal time to speak.
Okay, a few thi, I hear what you're saying, a few things.
So it is inappropriate to call question this time. And that is fact, frankly, and I, with all due respect, a function of moderation.
Okay, a couple of things. One is, I have no idea where people stand. So I'm counting on you to offer a counterpoint to what was just said. So that's one thing. Second of all, when the question is called, it can't be debated. You will have, anyone who hasn't spoken, who opposes the orig, um, Article 38, will have a chance to just, to share your views. So this isn't the end of the discussion.
Point of order, even if the amendment says it's replacing, that might be...
The question is being called, and the vote about whether to end discussion on the amendment must be called now.
Yep. Yep. Um, Deb, I have been entertaining what I understood as points of order. But there can be no subs, to Deb's point, there can be no substantive conversation right now. And I just want to say, this is true for all moderate, Town Moderators. I know Deb encountered it, other people have. There are many judgment calls to make throughout the meeting, and I'm doing my best to adhere to Robert's Rules of Order. And sometimes that doesn't, that means that some people don't always feel like, they, they don't, you don't always agree, but there, there are judgment calls to make, um, in, in order to adhere to Robert's Rules of Order. So, to Deb's point, the call, the motion to call the question has been made, it has been seconded, it is not up for debate. So right now, you are going to vote on whether to end, yes, Susan?
My understanding that if you still want to discuss the amendment, you vote nay now? Is that correct?
Yes.
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 So you would have their opportunity.
Thank you, Susan. That's an excellent point. So if you vote nay to end the, the discussion, then the conversation continues, until no one has anything else to say, or someone else calls the question. So, is it your desire to end discussion of Bruce's amendment that would substitute the original language of Article 38 with what he read? If you, you would like to end discussion, then you will say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, a division of the House has been requested by CB. What's that? Margaret, is this a point of order? Okay, could, excuse me, could everybody please, could everyone please listen? Margaret has a point of order. And Margaret, could you state your full name, please?
Of course, Margaret Wimberger, South Newfane. Um, Kim, I am just wondering, um, why we don't do in favor opposed and abstain, like we used to do? Oh, I'm sorry, I, ringing in my own ears. Okay. Um, for a question like this, in the past, I feel like people have gotten to vote aye, or nay, or abstain. But if we're standing up and sitting down, are we getting to choose to abstain? Okay. But, I mean, that hasn't even been part of any of the...
Yes, I, I also assumed that if you want to abstain, you don't stand up when it's a positive vote.
Okay.
And you don't stand up if it's a...
Right, but, I mean, it's, it's usually goes on record, doesn't it, how many folks abstain from anything, or no? Okay, never mind. Sorry to take up your time.
It's okay. Okay.
Point of clarification, Margaret?
Yes?
For the Select Board, where there is a certain number of us, then yes, the abstentions are counted. But not here in Town Meeting, where we're not having finite numbers, uh, unless we do a written ballot, which we have occasionally done.
Okay, the question was called, you all voted, and, um, the nays have it. So we will continue discuss... A division of the House. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Okay. Thank you. I ask for everybody's patience, please. If you are in favor of ending discussion of Bruce's amendment to substitute the language that he read, to substitute the original article with what he read, please stand. Ending discussion, this is not, this is ending discussion. Could, those of you who are standing, please sit down. Those of you who are opposed to ending discussion, please stand. If you are physically unable to stand, then please sit and raise your hand. Okay, 53 people voted to call the question on Bruce's amendment, discussion of Bruce's amendment, 40 people voted against that. So that, yeah, so the motion is not two thirds, 53 and 40. So the motion to call the question fails, which means we continue the discussion of Bruce's amendment. And I would like to call on the gentleman in the back with his hand up. And if you could please use the mic, and, thank you.
Hi, Raymond Churchfield, New Fane Village. Please forgive me for being here less than a year. First off, I'm an M moderator, I'd like to ask that you specifically ask that, you know, next person in favor, next person, please be a speaker against. Okay, just to keep this going fairly.
Yep.
Okay, now, my larger point. I oppose this amendment absolutely.
Could you please address that?
I oppose this amendment absolutely, because what is happening here is not a both sides issue. It is not both sides when one side has the unlimited protection of the world's only remaining superpower, and the other has no protection at all, other than weak and meaningless UN resolutions. It is not both sides when one side has the benefit of an unlimited delivery system of Mark 83 and Mark 84, 1,000 and 2,000 pound bombs, which I am intimately familiar with, I have dropped them on people. It is not a both sides issue when one side has tanks and all the other paraphernalia of a modern military. It is not a both sides issue when one side has managed to restrict and constrict the other to no form of economic development that allows it to perform any form of warfare. I have been, for much of my adult life, intimately involved with these processes, okay? Both in the infantry and in the intelligence branch. And what I can say from that is that there's no such thing as a terrorist. Terrorism is a strategy pursued by people who don't have tanks and JDAMs.
Could you please address the...
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Terrorism is a strategy pursued by those who do not have access to tanks and 2,000 pound bombs. That's all it is. And I would ask that the gentleman who proposes this amendment, consider, would he have advised the Haitian rebels to reconsider their position on plantation slavery? Would he have advised John Brown to discuss his position with the southern plantation owners, rather than raising armed rebellion? This is not a both sides issue, when one side has, even according to the orange cheeto making a verbal slip that he probably shouldn't have, admitting that there are 400,000 Palestinians in Gaza missing from the rolls over the past 15 months. Okay? And that is, I can tell you again from personal experience, that despite the 45,000 combat casualties reported by the Gaza Health Ministry, that is a Graves registry number. It is not a statistical estimate, which is the only thing you get in a situation like this, is statistics. And according to our own templates, when we drop bombs like this on a built-up area like this, you would get around 250 to 400,000 mortality, not the 45,000 number you're hearing, because those are identified bodies, please don't take my picture. So, no, this isn't a matter of both sides, and that amendment does not make any sense in this context. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me, I'm really sorry for interrupting. I don't know the name of the photographer who's here. First of all, could you please identify yourself?
From the reformer.
And your name?
Chris.
Okay.
Ratter.
Chris, just before you appeared to take a picture, remind me of your first name.
Raymond.
Raymond asked that you not take his picture, and then I did hear the camera click.
We're in a public forum, in a public setting.
This looks like a time to use the constable to remove somebody.
And I'm not going to sign any waiver or agree to have my picture used in any subject, okay?
Okay.
That is a specific request. It's in public until I request...
Excuse me, to the gentleman who's standing in, a person who's standing in front of Raymond, could you please take up your concerns with Chris at another time? Thank you.
So, yeah, pretty much that's all I have to say. You can't, both sides this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Raymond is speaking against the amendment.
That is...
Yep. Is there someone who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? The gentleman with the red and blue hat. Yeah, yeah, excuse me, yes, Dan?
We make sure that all speakers are from the town of New Fane, is that correct?
Yes.
I do not live in New Fane, I live in Athens, and, you know, make that clear.
Okay, so, excuse me, the entire assembly, could everyone who is not from the town of New Fane, please raise your hand? This is required by Roberts Rules of Order. Anyone who's not from the town of New Fane?
Oh, yes.
Okay, in order, according to Roberts Rules of Order, in order for any of you who are not from New Fane to speak, the entire body needs to give consent, or a majority of the body needs to give consent. So...
I have a question.
Yes?
Is it a simple majority or a two-thirds majority?
That is an excellent question. Is Deb still here? I believe it is two thirds. Is there... Hilly, are you able to ask Pete? Hilly? Yeah, are you able to ask, no, able to ask Pete this question? Whether a majority or two thirds of the House are required in order to allow a non-resident to speak? Can you, can you ask, can you ask Pete?
Yeah.
Do you remember? Okay, I know it's been a long time. Okay, let's, I do need to consult the Roberts Rules of Order, I, please take, and I think it's a good time for a break as well, it's been almost two and a half hours. So again, please take a short break, about five minutes, and then we'll come back.
So, did he speak?
Yes, he did.
So, I went to two town meeting moderator trainings, this never came up. I went to a webinar with a town moderator who moderated town meeting in his town for 30 years, this didn't come up. I looked in the little book and the big book of Roberts Rules of Order about guests speaking, and it is not clear on whether the body, we need a two-thirds vote or a majority vote to permit non-residents to speak. If there is no objection, I would like the vote on whether to let non-residents speak be a majority vote. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience, too. Okay, there are several people here who are not residents of New Fane, who would like to speak to the original, to Bruce's amend, no, excuse me, to, yeah, to Bruce's amendment. All those in favor of allowing that to happen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we need a division of the House, it's not clear to me. So if you support allowing non-residents to speak to Bruce's amendment, please stand. The justices of the peace are getting their, what?
I don't know what you're asking us to stand for.
Okay. If you support, if you are okay, approve, non-residents speaking to Bruce's article, please stand. If you are okay with non-residents speaking. And please stay standing until you are counted by one of our justices of the peace. If you're not able to stand, stay seated and raise your hand. Okay, could everyone who's standing, please sit? If you are opposed to people who are not from the town of New Fane speaking to Bruce's article, please stand. Okay, so that means that the people here who are not residents of New Fane will not be able to speak to Bruce's amendment. So now, we go back to Bruce's amendment, because you, someone called the question and you said, "No, we want to keep talking." So we're continuing to talk about Bruce's amendment, and Raymond spoke, he is not in support of the amendment. Is there someone who is in support of the amendment who would like to speak? Walter, and excuse me for eating, but I do need a little sustenance.
Hi, I'm Walter Hagadorn, Lower District, Rock River, on New Fane. Not to be confused with the other Walter, the very talented Walter there, thank you, sir. But, and thank you, Kim, and you're, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I know it's very difficult what you're doing. So thank you, a big round of applause. I don't think any of, not many of us would want to be up there where you are right now, for sure. And thank you to the select board, the select board that we elected to run our town, right? So these guys are, I'm not, I don't see a panel of international affairs up here. I see people that love the town, that are here to figure out what we're doing with our schools and our gravel and our potholes and all of those things. So I, I want to say that I do support the change in language. But I also want to say that I think the, that I think the article is inappropriate. I think we all have a lot of feelings about what's going on in the world. That's, I think that's without being said. But I do think the article is inappropriate, and the fact that, and thank you for taking my picture. I appreciate that. I think the article is inappropriate in that the language is not supportive to many of the people in our, in our community. And it's inflammatory for the people who are living here as taxpayers and homeowners. And so that's how I feel about that. But I think, yeah, the language needs to be changed, but if possible, we should definitely strike this, this thing right off the list there. And I think going forward, we need to figure out as a town, how we don't have this town meeting being used as a platform for people to stand up here on their soapboxes and talk about themselves and what they think about the world. I don't think that that's, this is the meeting for that. And that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
And there are four people with your, five people with your hands up, does someone have a different perspective from the one that Walter just shared? Okay, the person in the back with the black, your mask on, and if you could come up to the mic, that would be great, thank you.
My name is Saran Dias, I'm from New Fane. And I just want to point out, Marian made such a lovely and heartfelt speech, and she is a member of the Jewish community, her folks were, you know, part of the Holocaust, and some of them didn't make it through that. And I can fully, like, hold empathy and compassion for what that must be like. The thing that I took away most from what Marian said was that she and her late husband really felt every single day, every single day, the gift of living in New Fane, and what a privilege that was, and how proud she and her family were. And that she refuses to leave because of that pride, because of the feelings that living here affords her. I guess my perspective on that, coming from the other side, is that when we live in such a nice place, and when we are afforded such privilege to be in such a nice place, with that privilege, we can decide to stand up and say something, we can decide to do something. I don't think that, like, non-binding resolutions are particularly useful, but the same way that I don't think only 2% of the budget going to social services is, like, particularly useful, right? Like, so... Like, so much more is needed, right? So much more than a non-binding resolution is needed. But it is a thing that we can do with the privilege that we have and with the pride that we have for being part of New Fane, is that we can decide to stand up as a community and say apartheid is unacceptable to us. And that's all the resolution is about. It's not about any other things. It's about the system of apartheid, which is why the amendment to the resolution has nothing to do with the resolution because it doesn't have to do with apartheid. The whole point is that it has to do with apartheid. And the pride and the privilege that we have as New Fainers, I understand people saying this isn't a place for international issues, but it's what we do with the pride and privilege of being from such a wonderful place that we can decide as a community to do something about it. Thank you.
Point of clarification, technically, this is not a resolution. It's an article. And, and it, there is a difference. I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck. Um, and it actually does call, it does call for action. It calls upon this body to instruct the town clerk to convey a message. So it's, it is, we are asking for some kind of action, which is what makes, one thing that makes it an article. Patty, you've had your hand up for quite a while, and I, no others have too. I'll get to you, no worries. Patty, is this a different perspective from what was just?
I don't know where it belongs.
Okay.
I am, I am reading Article 38 as, as it was written. However, I am from the town of New Fane, have lived here, have different opinions from a lot of people. And I look at the original Article 38 and I would like to just remove, like, seven words. So we can't even discuss it according to, because if you vote on the other one, then it passes. So just let me know when I can come back up and tell you what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm thinking because it is possible to amend an amendment. Okay, so, yeah, so, so Patty? So Patty, we all, everyone needs to vote on Bruce's amendment, and the result of that will dictate... Correct.
So if...
Correct. If, if Bruce's, well, yes. Yeah, I, I know, I'm trying to address each point as it comes. It would be possible, i- if Bruce, even if Bruce's amendment passes, Patty, you could still then v, uh, move to amend the new language. Right, but we ha, we have to vote on Bruce's amendment first. Otherwise, we'll be, you'd be voting on two things at the same time, which is not possible. CB, you have had your hand up for quite a while.
Yeah, I rise and, and, uh, support Bruce's, uh, I want his amendment. Strike a law. And, uh, as far as the relevance, this, to our community, I remember that during the 1960s, someone, correct me if I'm wrong, that there were a lot of town meetings that condemned the continuation of the Vietnam War. And that, that growing consensus helped to put an end to that war. So I think that while Israel and Gaza seem very distant, I'm reminded of Gandhi's words. He said, "It's very unimportant what you do, but it's very important that you do it."
Excuse me, Lynn, Lynn, Lindsey and Fiona, do you have a point of order? Is there something that you feel I skipped over? Okay, Tom?
I think, I think the body needs to be advised that if the current amendment is approved, that the original article, it's gone.
Right.
It would have to be a reduced, reintroduced as an amendment. We could be back and forth all day long.
That is true.
So this is advising the body that if you approve this amendment, the original article is removed.
Yes, that is correct. It was an amendment, called an amendment by substitution.
Yeah.
And so there, it was, the, you all voted in, Bruce's amendment, which is still being discussed, is to replace the original language of Article 38 with what he read. So that's what we're discussing. And if Bruce's amendment passes, to Tom's point, then we don't go back and discuss the original language of Article 38 because it will just have been replaced with new language. What's up? Um, a number of people have your hands up. Anyone has a point of order? Yes. Well, points of order always...
We're talking about, uh, replacing the language. Walter Phelps, Williamsville. We're talking about replacing the language in the original amendment?
Article.
Article, if, thank you. If we use the word "change" instead of "replace", I think it will help us look at it more clearly. If we change, if we vote on this amendment to change the wording of the original article and it passes, then we've changed the wording in the original article. Then we open up discussion on that article. We can change it again. We can change it to back to where it was and make any other changes. So I think using the word "replace" is a little bit loaded because it seems like it vanishes and it's gone. If we instead talk about changing the language, it helps us to, uh,
Okay.
understand the situation.
Point, well taken. And Fiona, I know you called the question, but points of order supersede calling the question. Um, no, I'm reading. And points, uh, anything, anything having to do with point of order takes precedent over the main motion. So it is, I, I do need to continue to address points of order. Yes. Okay, then I'm sorry, you need to hold on. Any other points of order? It's so important everyone understands where the discussion is because it's easy to get lost. Brenda?
If someone wanted to make an amendment to the amendment, amendment, would that be now or after the vote? Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
No, we have to vote on Bruce's amendment. And then that can be, yes. That's, actually, you're, actually, you're right. Thank you. Um, you are right. There can be, there can only be two pending motions at the same time. So to Dan's point, Bruce's amendment would be one motion. And then if you wanted to change Bruce's amendment, then that would be a second motion.
Point of, point of order? At this point, the call to order is to decide if we are stopping discussion or continuing discussion. And that's it.
No, that was voted on and, and... Oh, Fiona, okay. I know, I want, as I said, I want to make sure all the points of order have been addressed. And that was one. Any other points of order? Okay, Dan, I heard what you're saying, but Fiona called the question. So after points of order have been answered, then we move to calling the question. And it requ, it does not require a second, but end, the decision to end debate on Bruce's amendment, which is where we are, needs a two-thirds vote. Calling the question is one motion that requires a two-thirds vote. So... All those in favor of ending discussion on Bruce's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against ending discussion on Bruce's motion, amendment, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Okay, there, there's a request for a division of the House. So if you are in support of ending discussion on Bruce's amendment, please stand. And just remember, just remember, standing to get counted is much quicker than a paper ballot, so. Um, could, unless it has to do with this counting at this very moment?
Are we counting the people from out of town right now?
No.
We think they're on three, and they are there, and back there, and the other man is left.
All three of them?
Okay, could everyone who just stood up, please sit down? If you are opposed to stopping discussion on Bruce's amendment, meaning you want to keep talking about it, please stand up. JPs, may people sit down? Okay, you can sit down, thank you. I'm not good at math in my head. Is, is that 22 thirds? Forty-nine, uh, in the affirmative, 23 in the opposition?
Thirty-two is, is two-thirds.
Thirty-two?
I was doing two-thirds, I just said yes. My mistake. All right, so the numbers were what again?
Forty-nine in the affirmative, 23 opposed. So... Forty-three is two-thirds? Forty-six would be two-thirds? Okay, well then it appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Discussion on Bruce's, is this a point of order? I know. You guys are a tough crowd. It's good, it's good. So as a result of this vote, there is no more discussion on Bruce's amendment. So now we move to voting on Bruce's amendment. And I will read it again. "We, the voters of New Fane, continue to be moved by the suffering caused by the deep history of violence and oppression in the Middle East. We, the voters of New Fane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on each other. We, the voters of New Fane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, with self-determination in peace." All those, is this a point of order? Yes?
Yeah. Is, is it all right to make an amendment to an article? Is it all right to make an amendment to an article that totally changes the meaning of the article? Because that's what this amendment does. We are missing the major points of the original Article 38 by amending it to this. Is that legal?
Yes. It, yes.
It is legal?
Yeah, because it's germane.
And it's apples to oranges.
Okay, that's, uh, we're going to continue with the vote. All those who are in favor of changing the current wording of Article 38 to what I just read, please stand up. I mean, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed to changing the language of Article 38 with what I just read, please say nay.
Nay.
Yeah, division of the House, it's hard for me to tell whether it was louder voices or more people.
Point of order?
Yes?
Is it going to be majority or two-thirds? It's always two-thirds?
No, majority.
It's majority?
Yeah. On an amend, on an amendment or a motion, without, with a couple of exceptions, it's majority. Yeah, majority. Okay. Okay, so hang, hang in there, everybody. I don't know who brought me this chocolate, but if you have more to hand out, I think people could use them. Okay, if you support ch, changing Article 38 with the language that I just read, please stand. Okay, if you are opposed to changing Article 38 to reflect Bruce's amendment, please stand. JPs, may folks sit?
Yes.
Okay. Forty, 33 yea, in the affirmative yea, 42 nay. So Bruce's amendment is, fails, correct? Does not pass? And now, now Patty, would you like, would you like to amend the original article?
Yes. I knew there'd be time for this. All right, so I'm back to the Patty Johnson, New Fane Village. Back to the original Article 38. And my suggestion, because... And my suggestion, because we're all world people, we are all human people, we all live in this amazing planet, that we take out seven words and change it from "we affirm our commitment to the freedom, justice, equality for all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, and oppression, and we declare ourselves to be apartheid-free community to that end." We're talking about Newfane. "We pledge to join others in working to end all apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression." So that could be Ukraine, Israel.
Okay, before you discuss it, could you please state that as a motion?
I state that as a motion.
I move.
I move.
That we change Article 38.
That we change Article 38 to what I just read, removing the seven words. So it's the fourth line, it would be removing the last almost four, "the Palestine people end."
Okay, I'm going to, Patty, may I read the whole thing as I understand it? You can tell me if it's correct?
Correct.
So the question at the end stays the same. Patty's talking about "we affirm to aggression," correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And what Patty, this is the language that Patty is proposing. It would be an amendment to Article 38.
Correct.
"We affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, and oppression, and we declare ourselves to be an apartheid-free community, and to that end, we pledge to join others in working to end apartheid policies."
To end, to end all.
To end all, yes, sorry, I do have that. "To end all apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression." Did I get that correct?
You got that correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Is there a second to that? Yes?
When you read it, I just want to make sure, because, I'm sure, you said "working to end apartheid policies," but we did not have the word "support" in there.
Yeah, right.
And "end all support of apartheid policies."
"We pledge to join others in working to end all..."
Support.
Apart, yes. I did leave it out, but you could discuss this.
So to state it a different way, in that first line, replace after equality, replace "the" with "all."
After equality, there's still four.
Equal, okay. Equality for all people.
Yeah.
So take out the word, change "the" to "all" and strike Palestinian. And then go down to the last line after "we pledge," after "working to end all," Patty's suggesting that "support to Israel's," those three words be removed. And that's the extent of the changes you're proposing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to Patty's amendment? Lindsay, okay, Lindsay, could you state your name, please?
Lindsay Bertram.
Okay, now that there is a sec, Dan, is this a point of order? Okay. Dan?
Madam Moderator, I'm deeply disappointed that this amendment completely erases the Palestinian people. These are the people who, through no fault of their own, because they are not Hamas, they're the people of Palestine, the children, the women, the non-combatants. They have suffered at least 50,000 casualties, and as Ray mentioned, more likely over 100,000. Their entire territory of Gaza has been bombed into rubble. And yet, we are saying that we do not acknowledge their particular suffering that we have been paying for. Those bombs which are dropped on them, those are our bombs. The intelligence that tells the people where to drop them is a combination of our intelligence and Israeli intelligence. So unlike Bruce's amendment, which I will plan to add, ask that we amend to add to our original amendment, this amendment completely erases the Palestinians, and I find it massively unjust and disingenuous, because it takes something which we are part and parcel of, which is the genocide and ethnic cleansing and apartheid in Israel, and that we are part of, and it turns it into just a universal notion of something bad that, you know, we don't like, which means that we're just not taking any responsibility for our government's actions whatsoever. So I would ask people to oppose this.
Someone with a different view from what Dan just expressed? Yes, you're in the scarf and rust-colored shirt.
Hi, everybody, my name is Gail Robertson, I live in Newfane. I want to make one suggestion about another word change possibility that might help a little bit.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Gail, there's already a motion that's been seconded.
Okay.
So that, that's what we're discussing.
Okay, so I can't ask to...
Yeah, you can discuss it, yep. And then there is also the possibility, well, hang in there with me, of Patty withdrawing her motion and then allowing Gail to make a motion that includes Patty's language with this one change. That it, that is.
Maybe she'd like to hear it first.
Yes, I think she definitely would want to hear it first. I'm just saying procedurally, that is an option.
Point of order?
Yes. Uh, correct, because there's only, yes, there's only... No, no, we can only have two pending motions at a time, and one pen, what, excuse me?
That would make two.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So.
She could make an amendment to Patty's amendment.
A- after Patty's.
Then we have to vote on the amendment to be amended.
Correct.
Then we have to vote on her amendment.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, so Gail, you can make a suggestion, it cannot be voted on at this very moment.
Okay.
So it'd be part of the discussion.
Okey-dokey.
Okay.
So my suggestion would be where it says "we pledge to join others in working to end," I would keep support, so "we pledge to join others in working to end all support of apartheid policies," so we put support back in, which I think addresses in some very small ways Dan's concern that we, as a country, are supporting these policies in the Middle East. So that's my suggestion.
Yes, you can withdraw, yep. I'm sorry, I don't know where it went. May I please have another copy of Bruce's amendment? I mean, um...
Do you want a book?
No.
We're on the original now.
Yeah, the original, okay. Okay, so.
Do you want me to say it again?
Since Patty withdrew her motion.
Okay.
Because she has heard and agrees with your additional changes, could you please reread from "we affirm to aggression"
Okay.
"with Patty's proposed changes and yours?"
Okay. "We affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, and oppression, and we declare ourselves to be an apartheid-free community, and to that end, we pledge to join others in working to end all support of apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression." We could also add "throughout the world," but...
Okay, so then according to what Gail just proposed, the, everything that Patty suggested would stay the same, but only the words "to Israel's" would be removed.
They'd be removed and the word "of" would be added after "support."
Yep.
So it would read "end all support of apartheid."
So "end all support of apartheid policies," that's how that would read, correct?
Right, so that's, that's a change to what Patty proposed.
Right, right. Would anyone like me to reread what we're now discussing? Well, okay, and I'm going to reread it before I ask for a second to make sure everybody's clear on what is being seconded. So, Gail, could you actually come back and make a formal motion? So I move to change the language in Article 38 to read.
Okay. "I move to change the language in Article 38 to read. We affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, and discrimination, and oppression, and we declare ourselves to be an apartheid-free community, and to that end, we pledge to join others in working to end all support of apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression." And I'll just say what I like about that.
I'm sorry, not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, Walter seconds it, and the person who made the amendment gets to speak first, so Gail?
What I like about that change is that although I feel the pain that everyone is describing about Palestine, I know I have to address you, Palestine and the Middle East in particular, I do think that this kind of evil, as someone named it, is happening all over the world in many communities of different sorts, whether we are aware of them or not. And to specify one area that is more important than other areas is a kind of disservice or disrespect to people who are suffering in other places around the world, you know, really just because we're not aware of it at that point. And so I would, I would ask for that change.
Okay, you in the front?
Omission of the word "Palestinian people" here. Excuse me, Elasia Darling, South Newfane. Omission of the word "Palestinian people" and the phrase "Israel's apartheid policies" would be akin to trying to tell people that it's not an actual problem happening to these people, and instead just an overall problem. In the same way we say Black Lives Matter, we don't just say "all lives matter," because all lives matter, it's a direct recognition of people of color who are being discriminated against. What that ends up looking like is that we disqualify people's suffering. We recognize, and the wording states that we support the ending of apartheid and punishment to other people as well. I request that you all consider all of that, all of the facts that we have the ability to take accountability for what's happening right now to Palestinian people, to what Israel is doing to people through our aid. It is about all of us, but primarily it's about those of us who are suffering now.
Is there someone with a different perspective who would like to speak? Yes. Dennis, no, not Dennis.
Scott.
Scott, sorry.
Hi, I'm Scott Iranowitz, I'm from Newfane, and I, whether this, uh, whether this winds up being an approved amendment or a defeated amendment, I kind of address it in the same way, because the word "apartheid" keeps coming up over and over again. So, last year, I appreciated that the discussion condemning Israel and calling for a ceasefire in Gaza was both respectful and filled with genuine concern for the feelings of Jewish residents within this Newfane community. However, when someone did suggest that wording be added recognizing Israel's own suffering, the thousands killed in a single day by Hamas, that suggestion was rejected with insistence that the ballot focus only on the victimization of Palestinian people.
Scott, I'm sorry, Robert's rules of order do not allow someone to read from something that has been written unless it's like just very short.
Thank you, then, okay, I'll only refer to it when I'm reading directly, okay? Thank you. I also, so this year, it's a national organization that has created a shared wording that is being voted on in six different Vermont towns, so it's being brought up and it's like the same general wording. Now, I, like millions of other Israeli citizens, actually have supported a two-state solution, support a permanent ceasefire, support the right of Palestinians to determine their own sovereignty. So there are many people in Israel that do support this. And if this proposal, as in its original wording, I wanted also to say that I appreciate that Newfane has slightly adjusted the wording from the original wording from this national organization that's going in ballots all over the state. If this support, if this had just been this slightly modified proposal, "we affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for the Palestinian people and all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, oppression, and military occupation," if the proposal had ended like that, I would have said fine, I would have voted for it, I'd asked for the vote right away, it would have been fine. But then in the next lines, it starts using all kinds of what I consider to be inflammatory and also simplifying buzzwords such as settler colonialism, apartheid, and so on, and we've been hearing other kinds of wording as well. Now, because this was put forward by a different organization, this is their definition of apartheid, right here. "Inhuman acts committed for the purpose of establishing and maintaining domination by one racial group of persons over any other racial group of persons and systematically oppressing them." So that is basically implying that the entire state of Israel oppresses Palestinians primarily because they are of a different race and culture. I will not subscribe to that kind of definition for the state of Israel. Now, whether or not you just like say, okay, if this amendment fails and somebody else comes up and says, well, we just about the first two lines, we'll see where that goes. But the other thing that bothers me about it, even because I think it was easily changeable, just like last year's was easily changeable, was that it bothers me that, and with full knowledge of what was said before, that anybody can come up with, you know, if they come up with 10% of the voting population, anybody could bring any issue up. But in the last several years, the only non-local issues that have come up has been about Israel and Palestine. Nothing about Darfur, nothing about Ukraine, nothing about other countries that the United States supports militarily and economically, like Saudi Arabia or other places like that. It's only this one particular thing. So just to finish up and get from there, I agree that Israel should be called out for its crimes and discriminatory policies. However, I ask that in today's vote, please, rather than rely on wording that oversimplifies complex problems, let us use more carefully considered language, or perhaps approve only the first two lines of the proposal, and I know that there's another amendment right here. Whichever direction this conversation takes us in, let us demonstrate to ourselves and the other towns in Vermont that we just don't go in about this with unexamined initiative, that we both can support Palestinian people and ensure that with all the wrongs and injustices happening throughout the world, we are not reserving our only condemnation for what really will ultimately amount to the Jewish people of Israel. Thank you.
Are you going to speak in support of the amendment, of the amended language?
I will go and speak differently than the previous speaker.
Okay, okay, please go ahead.
My name is Deena and I live in Newfane. I've lived here for 10 years. I've lived here for 10 years. I am married to someone whose family has lived in Vermont for over 200 years. And I mention this because I am not a Vermonter. I am a New Yorker. I grew up in New York. Both my parents are Jewish. I grew up in a Zionist household. But I want to let you know that I have been to Palestine—not to Gaza. I've been to the West Bank, and I have seen it in action. I have seen who is allowed to drive on the roads and who is not, who is allowed to leave and who is not, who has access to water and who has not, what do the signs say, what language are they written in, who are the people carrying machine guns, and what language are their uniforms written in. I have seen it, and it is apartheid. And I was there 20 years—actually, 25 years ago. And it hasn't gotten better since then. It's gotten worse since then. The wall was halfway completed when I was there. It's entirely the separation wall. Separation, apartheid, wall. It's really apartheid. So I just want to say that anyone who wants to say that that's not what is happening there, it's different from what it was in South Africa, it is definitely—I mean, Gaza itself has been described as an open-air prison of 2 million people. I mean, use the word prison if you don't like the word apartheid. I want to say that I think that scrubbing the words Palestine and scrubbing the words apartheid from the amendment is a mistake, that it doesn't get at what this—what this— not amendment, but—
Article.
Article, thank you. What this was trying to get at. So I'm hoping that before today is over, we can in fact get at what this article is trying to get at. And I don't know if I can do this now or what the procedure is, but I've heard a number of people saying that they like the idea of including this text of Article 38 and also the text that Bruce suggested. So could there be an amendment to an amendment? Or is this—I don't know when or how to bring that up, but that was one suggestion that I heard going around that—because it seems that people do like the text that Bruce introduced, and it also seems that it's important to keep the words apartheid and the words Palestine in the article as it was written.
We—the body already voted in opposition to the idea of replacing the original article with Bruce's language.
Not replacing, I'm saying do it in addition.
Okay, that is possible, but we—that's a different action than what we're talking about right now. So we need to finish discussion of the proposed changes to the wording of Article 38 as discussed. And then if you would like to bring that up, we can take that up afterwards. Okay. Tom, do you have a point of order?
Maybe too late, but I was gonna speak to the amendment.
Yeah, once—yeah, it's called, yeah. So the question has been called. Dan, could you please state your name for the record? Which means that discussion of Gail's proposed changes in wording to Article 38 will end. So if I ask you, are all those in favor of ending discussion, say "aye." Okay, that—that was just a little demonstration, but any—okay. All those opposed to ending discussion on Gail's amendment, please say "nay." Okay. So discussion ends on the proposed amended language, and I will read the current amendment that you will be voting on momentarily. Article 38 has been—is proposed to be revised to read. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane adopt the following pledge and instruct the town clerk to convey this message to the select board, state legislature, governor, lieutenant governor, and U.S. congressional delegation? "We affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for all people, and we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, and oppression, and we declare ourselves to be an apartheid-free community. And to that end, we pledge to join others in working to end support of all apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression." All those in favor of this new wording, revised wording of Article 38, please say "aye." Those opposed, say "nay." Division of the House. So, all those in favor of this new wording, please stand. Okay, Fiona, Carol, Carol Ross. Do you intend to be counted in the affirmative, Fiona? Did you count Carol Ross in the affirmative as standing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure you were accurately—okay, could everyone who's standing, please sit down? And if you are opposed to the new wording of Article 38, please stand.
27, yes, 34.
Okay. So the—could I please have everyone's attention? Thank you. So the proposed changes to Article 38 were not approved, that failed. Deana, do you want to make a motion—oh, Tom, is this a point of order? Okay. So, Deana, do you want—is this the time that you would like to make a motion to add Bruce's language to the original language of Article 38? Deana, did I misunderstand what you were proposing earlier? Do you want to make that motion? Sure. Is there anyone else who would like to make that motion, adding Bruce's language to the original language of Article 18? Bruce, you would like to? Okay, could you state that as a motion, please? Yes? There can only be two pending motions at the same time, but right now, there are no motions. Although—well, actually, Bruce is going to state his motion. So you move to—
I move to add the language that I had presented earlier to finish off this amendment, to come at the end of this amendment. I—I—I'm sorry, at the end. At the end of this article, I would like to include the language that I shared with everybody earlier.
Is there a—yes, Fiona?
Isn't this—isn't the language you have, Bruce, already approved from last year?
No, it doesn't matter. It's a new year. It's a new year.
Yeah. And we—just to be clear, we vote—you all voted earlier to change the language—Walter doesn't want me to use "replace," but—to replace the language of Article 38 with Bruce's amendment that was struck down. Yeah, I'm just—I'm confirming with everybody. So now, Bruce is suggesting that his language be added to the original language of Article 38. Okay, Dan is second. And Tom, would you like to speak to that?
Tom Concanon from the mighty village of South Newfane. So I have a lot of respect for how all of this comes to be, and I understand that there's a legal process for bringing motions to—I'm sorry—articles to town meeting. And also, every time I come to one of these, anywhere I've lived, I learn a lot about democracy. But one thing is that I really don't care what the language of this particular article ends up being. I will oppose it. Because there's some details in our work of the town that require our deep and undivided attention. Schools, roads, the cost of health care, which is driving up every aspect of our budget. And I would like to, at some point, be able to speak to the moderator about really what's going on with that, what's behind the escalation of health care expenditures year after year, We need hours to get into that stuff. We need full days. We need preparation for this meeting. I understand that this part of the preparation, part of what happens and unfolds at this meeting, it's democratic. But I will oppose anything that's not town business when it comes to a final vote. So I'm gonna abstain from all the amendments going forward, and I'm going to oppose the final amendment. That's just what I wanted to put forward.
Is there anyone who has not spoken yet who would like to speak in favor of the current motion that's on the floor? Yes, the gentleman in the gray vest.
My name is Carl Durham. I live in Newfane. And I just want to say that this is one of the reasons my wife and I moved here, is meetings like this, the appreciation of a select board that does think about the town and other people who give their opinion very deeply heartfelt. And I don't know if everybody saw this or captured this, but the gentleman, Bruce, who originally wanted to change what was originally there, just said, "I can understand where Dan's coming from." And that was a compromise. And I don't know if everybody saw it, but they were back there talking. They're still friends. That's what makes this country the way it is. And anybody doesn't—well, let me rephrase that. My opinion is, this is the nail that lost the shoe, that lost the horse, that lost the battle, that lost the war. Everything we do here, like it or not, works its way up to the national and international—everything. We're in a global society now. Apartheid is dangerous. The freedom fighters in the '60s, they didn't just stick around and do things just for their town, but the things they did outside affected their town. So I think—my personal opinion is that this is a perfect compromise. You still identify the Palestinians as victims in this case, knowing full well that nobody should have to go through what her parents and she and her husband went through. That's unforgivable, and we don't want to go through that again. But the way you don't go through that again is by addressing things when they're still addressable and understanding that everything ties together. So, thank you.
I would also like to ditto what Carl said. I am again impressed by the respect with which everybody is addressing each other. Is there someone who would like to speak in opposition to the current motion that's on the floor to add Bruce's language to the original article? Anyone who is opposed to that who would like to speak? Is there anybody else who would like to say—Chris? Were you gonna—Chris White? Well, in order to keep it balanced, it would be against.
I understand the feeling that we can impact the world. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I understand the sentiment that we can impact the world. In my view, that's a little naive, but it's a very lovely feeling. I'm opposed to this amendment, and I'm very sad that many, many people had to leave before we got to this, because we're not getting a full feeling of the town. We're getting the feeling of the very passionate one way or the other. But in my—if one of these is going to pass, I feel it should be without the first paragraph. I don't think that we should be telling—we should be taking a position and passing it on to other government agencies as if this group of 60 people represents all the voters. I just don't agree with that. And so I would like to see that changed, but otherwise, that's all I have to say.
If you would like—Chris, if you would—if you would like to see that changed, then after Bruce's amendment is decided upon, you could make a motion to make that change. Yes, in the back.
I have two things to say.
Your name?
My name is Laura Siaw. I'm a resident of Newfane. I have two things to say. One, to the person, Christine White, who just spoke, that if—if that—if you're feeling that it's kind of unfair to take the opinion of, let's say, 60 people in this room, I would argue that that's kind of a bigger question about the structure of town. the structure of town meeting itself and whether that is a procedure that is worthy of continuing, if that's a question of if this is the most democratic way to put forth various policies. And my second point is to Tom about how you would rather, you feel that time could be spent discussing things such as the constant increase in the cost of healthcare, which is bringing up the cost of the budget for the town. And to that I say, well, healthcare costs are not isolated to New Fane. The cost of healthcare is a symptom of how the town of New Fane is so intertwined to state and federal and international policies and pressures. We live in a very interconnected world. So just to say that, I totally agree. If we're going to talk about how healthcare costs are feeling like they're completely out of anybody in this room's control, that's exactly the point. We're so tied in to these systems and that is exactly why we can't really, I think, think of things as whether they're New Fane only or everybody else, because clearly plenty of other New Fane town business is so intertwined with so many other forces much greater than this town.
Okay, Raymond has called the question. Is there a second? Tom Bedell? Okay, I know you're getting really good at this now. So the question has been called, which means that discussion of Bruce's amendment. Is everyone clear on what is referred to as Bruce's amendment, or would you like me to read it? What's that? Okay, great. Thank you for saying so. So this is the, this is the language that Bruce has proposed be added to the original language of Article 38. "We, the voters of New Fane, continue to be moved by the suffering caused by the deep history of violence and oppression in the Middle East. We, the voters of New Fane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of New Fane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." So you're calling, your decision now is whether to continue discussion of adding that to the original article or continuing the discussion of the motion to add Bruce's language to the original article. So I can't tell if you're tired or everyone's really confused. Did you follow that? Okay, we, so... Okay, so the motion that's being discussed, had been discussed, was adding Bruce's language to the original article. And then the question was called. So the next decision is whether to continue discussion of the motion to add Bruce's language to the original article or to cease discussion. Are you clear, Mary? Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. I'm glad you asked if anyone's unclear. So if you support ending discussion on Bruce's motion to add his language to the original article, please stand. You're just making a decision about discussion. A voice, oh, thank you. I'm getting tired. Okay, all those in favor of ending discussion of Bruce's amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, so we are ending discussion. And now, I know it's a little tedious, but I have to do it. We, this is what you're about to vote on. You're about to vote on whether you support or don't support this language. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane adopt the following pledge and instruct the town clerk to convey this message to the select board? That's true, that would, if it is approved, then it would be the whole thing. Yeah, thank you, you're right. Okay. All those in favor of adding Bruce's language to the original article, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, or appear to have it? The ayes have it? Okay, Bruce's language. I will, that's what I, yeah, thank you, that's what I was about to do, but I got ahead of myself. Okay, so now the decision is whether to vote in support of or not. What? You guys, everyone has to be patient. We have, town members have to follow Robert's rules of order. We have to. So now, the motion that's on the table that you are about to decide is whether or not to support the revised Article 38. And I'm going to read it, so everyone's really clear on how it will read if you approve it. "Shall the voters of the town of New Fane adopt the following pledge and instruct the town clerk to convey this message to the select board, state legislature, governor, lieutenant governor, and U.S. congressional delegation? We affirm our commitment to freedom, justice, and equality for the Palestinian people. And we oppose all forms of racism, bigotry, discrimination, and oppression. And we declare ourselves to be an apartheid-free community. And to that end, we pledge to join others in working to end all support of Israel's apartheid policies, settler colonialism, and military occupation and aggression. We, the voters of New Fane, continue to be moved by the suffering caused by the deep history of violence and oppression in the Middle East. We, the voters of New Fane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on one another, on the other. We, the voters of New Fane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." All those who support... Okay, thank you, Mary. Is there a second? Emmett Madavi? Thank you. All those in favor of this motion, what I just read, please say aye. Those who are opposed to that motion, say nay. The, I believe the ayes have it? Okay, then I will call for a division of the House. I think it's very important we be really clear on these votes. So, yes, Dan? Yes, the original language of Article 38 plus Bruce's amendment, yes. So if you support that, then please stand. Everyone can sit down, thank you. For those who are opposed to the new proposed Article 38, the original language plus Bruce's amendment, please stand. Forty-six in the affirmative, sixteen in opposition. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The motion to keep, stick with the same language in Article 38 plus adding Bruce's amendment has been approved, has been passed. Well done. I don't mean about the article. I mean, I'm, what? That's very sweet. Thank you, Raymond. Now, I know you'll all be excited to know there's one more article. And that is, Gerald, I'll get to you in just a second. Do you have a point of order, Gerald? Okay, hold on one second. "To transact any other business that may legally come before the town." I want to remind you that nothing that comes under this article can be voted on or is binding. So these are discussions, announcements, things like that. Okay, Gerald? And then Angela? Yes.
Tonight at the Latches Theater at 7 o'clock, doors open at 6 o'clock, is a benefit concert for urgently needed supplies for Ukraine. For medical supplies, other support. So if you are in town and interested in supporting Ukraine at the Latches Theater tonight at 7 o'clock. A variety of musicians will be playing. So please come out and support Ukraine. Thank you.
Angela?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the community for your continued support of me while serving on the select board. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve this great community of my hometown. Thank you so much.
Sam Dutton. And I know I just said your name, but if you could repeat it for the record, that'd be great.
Sam Dutton, Williamsville. So I've heard a lot of individuals speak about how they don't feel like items such as Article 38 are appropriate for regular town meeting. I was just curious to know if there was any process in which to request that a special town meeting be called, which may be more appropriate for such topics?
Yes, if you get enough petition signatures and Carol can tell you or Renetta where on the website that form is, you have to get, am I correct, 5%? 10%, 10% of the voters, which adds up to be about... Okay, so if you, for example, would next year, like, if you would like to call a special meeting, you'd have to get that petition and get about 75 signatures from people in New Fane and bring it to the select board.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Brenda?
I originally had a resolution that other towns have voted on, but since we're not voting and this took so long, I'm not going to do it. And I'm going to do it a different way. But I did want to say anyways that I heard several times during this meeting concern about press that was here and taking photographs. And I want to say something really clearly. The freedom of the press right now in our country is under attack. And it is really critical that press are allowed to be here, that they are allowed to film, that they are allowed to take photographs. If we don't allow that, if we don't support that as a people, then that is going to go away and our access to information is going to go away. And so as someone who's been in the public eye, who's had plenty of photographs of myself out there in the world that I didn't like, quotes that maybe were not as pleasant for me to read as I would have liked. This is part of our democracy, that is a critical part of our democracy. And it makes us different than China in that way, and different than North Korea in that way. And we want to preserve that and protect it. So while it might be uncomfortable at times when we're in a public meeting, it is really important that we support the freedom of the press.
Emmett, then Raymond, then Ken.
Emmett Madavi, Williamsville. I have heard, like, in leading up to town meeting, you know, some people's issues with scheduling, being able to come on a Tuesday morning, you know, between childcare and work, that's challenging. And I guess I heard somebody like express that they would like to have, you know, maybe, I guess, maybe next year, we could vote on potentially moving to a weekend town meeting as a way to make it more accessible to people if we're so concerned about having people present for democracy's sake.
Yes, I made it now, I wrote in my note to myself, yeah. Yep, I agree. And, hold on one second, Ken, no? Okay, is there anyone else who would like to say anything before we adjourn? Yes?
Val Yeager, South New Fane. I'm just asking whether or not this meeting is on Zoom and where that accessibility is. Are there Zoom meetings for the town meeting?
Could someone on the select board please address the question? And could you repeat the question?
The question is whether or not there was a Zoom link for this particular town meeting? And no, there's not, sorry. But our regular select board meetings have Zoom, so you can attend at any time. It's on the agenda.
I know, I know everyone's tired and restless. If you could just either take your conversation outside or keep it down, that'd be great. Thank you.
It is, it's not arbitrary. We did look into it. It's not a possibility because it thwarts some other aspects of town meeting altogether. And we just can't offer it. It's because of the rules of how floor votes work and how all of that happens, that we can't have people tuning in from the outside and attempting to do any of those things. It messes the whole thing up. So we have looked into it. We would love to offer it if we were able to, but it's not an option.
They're asking if the select board is open to suggestions as to how to increase accessibility?
The select board, I would say, is always open to those suggestions, but just recognize that a lot of decisions are governed by state law. And so some things that we might want to do, we can't do if we are not allowed to by the state. I just want to go back to one issue that Emmett brought up about the... Sorry, I'm sorry, what was he talking about? Oh, the dates, that we did look into that and the research that we did at that time, not that it might not be different now. But we, when we researched it, we found that towns that had switched, particularly to the weekend... we found that towns that had switched particularly to the weekend saw their participation decrease. It's a killer, right? So, yes, I mean, you could do some more informal surveying of people here in town to find out what might be more, what people might be more open to.
Again, that's one of those, there's a whole process to it. We can have a whole conversation about it. We could have a special meeting about it. We could have a vote about it. But we have to have a vote about it as the public, not just us. Right. It has to be an article that we vote on as a special meeting item or a regular town meeting item. And, you know, that takes conversation. And we can only have these conversations at town meeting, which is, if it happens, it would be in a couple of years and we'd have to talk about it beforehand and then wait a whole year before it actually becomes a thing. So it is a possibility. But let's have a meaningful conversation about it.
Yes. Could you please stand up and go to the mic and introduce yourself? Again, state your name.
Alessia Darling. Two regards. One, I did hear about a law that offers the ability for people to leave work legally for the town meeting and not be prosecuted for it under any circumstance. I don't know the degree to that law, but it might be important to get that information out so that people know that they can come even if it's midweek. The second one was in regard to the ADA. I don't, I honestly, this is not a criticism. I don't know the compliance between the ADA and also, like, town meeting regulation and rule. And that would probably be very complicated. But I do think the current system does gatekeep the ability for disabled people who can't be here in person for hours on end from actually attending and being able to, like, take part in their own town. I don't know if there's a fix for this or what, but I would ask that you all take that into consideration, both of those things. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't know what you mean by long time. It's only been six hours.
Six hours for somebody with a mobility disability can be.
Oh, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I did not read that tone.
It has been a long meeting. Anything else that anyone wants to say before? Yes?
I am somewhat disturbed. I understand the idea of maybe getting a Google screen or something of people joining via Zoom in the future. It might be a viable, something to look into. That's number one. Number two, I just want to let that in. I know I'm offering free slowdown signs at my expense. Any woman chooses to put them in front of one to address some of the earlier traffic that we discussed.
And it's welcome to anyone that chooses to just leave your name. My name is Bruce Saul. I live at 127 by the bridge. And to address the traffic in a unification form, I'd be happy to cohesively make a group of signs that stretch down the town road, but they're removable at the homeowner's request.
Thank you. To which bridge are you referring?
Pardon? Both bridges, actually.
In terms of where you live and where people can go to get the slowdown sign?
I'll have them at my home or I'll have them, I could drop some off.
Oh, covered, great.
Here in the middle hall.
Okay, great.
And I'm going to make them available to everyone in town.
Great. Anything else anyone would like to add? Jesse? Okay. Is there a second?
Second is.
Okay. Carol, did you get the second? Can you state your name for the record?
Valerie Yeager.
There's no debate, no discussion allowed. So all those in favor of adjourning this year's town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. Well, thank you for your patience and being here today.